I've not gotten the signal that we are live.
I think we're still testing out some audio issues, but we are live on UGTV and.
Mayor, we are ready.
All right, very good. Thank you. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, some commissioners, staff, and public are attending remotely via Zoom, by phone, or onsite. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and as current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. Due to COVID-19 requirements, the public is allowed to participate by Zoom or submit comments by email prior to meeting. Those comments are included in the record. Public also has the opportunity to provide brief comments from the lobby of the municipal office building. I'd ask the clerk to please call the meeting to order and call roll.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. Before I call tonight's roll, I need to make mention that Commissioner Kane is unavailable tonight due to the passing of a family member. Roll call. Markley.
Here.
Walters. Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend. McKeonan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane. Alby.
Here. Our invocation is being given by Commissioner Harold Johnson of Faith Deliverance Church of God in Christ, and will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight, I'll be praying a prayer of thanksgiving. Good and gracious God, tonight we offer up a prayer of thanksgiving to you. Thank you for your amazing power and your work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. Thank you that you alone are able to bring hope through even the toughest of times. Thank you for your great love and your care for us. Thank you for your tender mercy. Thank you for your amazing grace. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice, so that we might have freedom in life. Forgive us when we don't thank you enough for who you are, for all that you have done, and for what you've given us. Renew our spirits, fill us with your peace and your joy, and help us, especially during this holiday season. We give you all the praise and the thanks in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs. Clerk, are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
Mayor, there was. A blue sheet was issued modifying the administrator's agenda for this evening. Three separate labor agreements were added for consideration, including the Labor's Local Number 1290 Agreement, the Carpenter's Labor Agreement, and the Local Number One Labor Agreement. Those were all the changes to tonight's agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. So our first order of business is the mayor's agenda, and I would like to recognize Mayor John McTaggart. And Mayor McTaggart does not know why he was invited here today, but as many of you know, Mayor McTaggart is ending his term of service as mayor of Edwardsville in January. And so I would like to offer this proclamation in honor of John McTaggart. Whereas John Tiny, Tiny McTaggart, has provided more than 30 years of public service, community leadership, and civic involvement with the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, Wyandotte County, Kansas, the metropolitan region, and the state of Kansas. Whereas he has been a resident of Edwardsville for nearly 40 years and a small business owner for 35 years, providing him a unique business and local constituent perspective on various matters. Whereas his government and public service extends three decades, including serving on the Edwardsville City Council, serving as mayor of Edwardsville on two separate occasions, and being the first unified government commissioner representing District Seven. Whereas his community and civic service during this period has included multiple positions with various regional and local boards, associations, and organizations, all that benefited from his insight, involvement, and participation. This includes, among others, the Mid-America Regional Council Board, the Wyandotte County Economic Development Council Board, the League of Kansas Municipalities Chair of the Board of Governors, the Johnson and Wyandotte County Council of Mayors Chair, the Wyandotte County Library Board, Wyandotte County Parks and Recreation Board, Wyandotte County Park Foundation Board Chair, the Wyandotte County Historical Society and Museum Board, Leadership 2000 Board, the Kansas City Kansas Community College, Community College Advancement Council. Whereas clearly, his passion for improving his community, the region, and the state of Kansas can be measured by thousands of hours of service he has given back over the years at the local level, the metropolitan, Kansas City level, and statewide. Whereas as current mayor of Edwardsville, Kansas, he has helped this city achieve significant growth and development over the years and improve overall public services while representing his community's interests within Wyandotte County and at the state and federal levels. Whereas his service and work has been recognized on several occasions, including being chosen as Mayor of Year by the Kansas Mayors Association and being a recipient of the EA Mosher Excellence in Local Government Award from the League of Kansas Municipalities. Whereas based upon his accomplishments and contributions and his outstanding 30-plus years of public service, community leadership, and civic involvement with the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, Wyandotte County, Kansas, the metropolitan region, and the state of Kansas. And whereas John Tiny McTaggart is just a good guy to know, now therefore, I, David Alby, Mayor, CEO of Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim December 3, 2021, as John Tiny McTaggart Recognition Day in Wyandotte County, Kansas, Kansas City, Kansas, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and the seal of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. So Mayor McTaggart, we just want to say thank you. Your example of leadership is an inspiration to all of us. And you know, your longstanding commitment has benefited so many people throughout our community and our state. We're just here to say thank you, and we wish you the very best in your years beyond public service, which it probably won't end, but officially.
David, I want to thank you and the Unified Government so much for this honor. It really is an inspiration for me to, for the service I have made and the commitment I have made to my community. And when I say my community, I consider all of Wyandotte County my community. I always have, and I have always maintained that. And it has been a real honor to serve in all the capacities that I have over the last nearly 30 years. But I really want to say how much I appreciate this. I really do, and thank you very much, all of you.
You're welcome, and we invite you to stay for the rest of our agenda. I'm telling you, get the hell off while you can.
David, I think I'm going to go, because I really don't need to. Being a short timer, I'm getting really close to where I don't have to listen to this anymore.
Again, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all very much, and good night, and a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is extending our local health order. I asked legal counsel to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jeff Conway with the Legal Department. And I just, I just wanted to say that this is typically extended 90 days. This time, it's 90 days plus two more weeks. And the reason is that the feds issued a statement that they're looking at April 1st. Now, the word that I had received originally was that April 1st was probably the termination of the federal emergency. But as you know, things are moving kind of quickly now. And so really what it is, is a statement by the feds that April 1st is a guarantee that they will pay through April 1st, at the very least. In the past, Matt May, who wanted to be here tonight, Director of Emergency Management, he's, there was the death, and he was attending the visitation tonight. He said in the past that the feds sometimes give a date and then retroactively back off of that. So we're left hanging maybe a few weeks with paying our own bills. But in this case, April 1st is the definite date, and it may be extended past that. So we're aligning our deadline with the federal deadline. There is no state emergency. But the primary benefit of this is that the federal money could flow to the local as long as the locals have an emergency in place. So I'd be happy, sure.
Again, just explicitate that a little bit more, that the reason we are considering this is to allow us to access federal monies.
That's the primary benefit. It's really not tied up with masks and all of that. It's just, it's just a way for the federal money to flow to the locals. That's right.
Thank you. Any members of the commission have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Vote to approve. Mr. Ramirez, District Three.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez.
Markley, Second.
We have a motion to second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane. Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That completes the mayor's agenda. So tonight, we have two distinct parts to our meeting, planning and zoning. First, followed by regular commission meeting. I'd ask the clerk to read the statement required by state law governing the planning and zoning portion of our meeting, followed by the items on the planning and zoning consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We would like to welcome all present to this meeting of the Unified Government Commission. Members of the commission are Mayor David Alby, Commissioner Melissa Bynum, at-large District One, Commissioner Tom Burrows, at-large District Two, Commissioner Gail Townsend, District One, Commissioner Brian McKeonan, District Two, Commissioner Christian Ramirez, District Three, Commissioner Harold Johnson, Jr., District Four, Commissioner Mike Kane, District Five, Commissioner Angela Markley, District Six, Commissioner Jim Walters, District Seven, and Commissioner Jane Philbrook, District Eight. As each petition is called this evening, all persons for or against will be given the opportunity to express their views. If this is the first time that a particular petition has been before this commission, the commission has three options. Option one, it can vote. It can approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission with six votes. Two, it can override the Planning Commission's recommendation, but it would take eight votes to override. Three, it can return the matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration together with a statement specifying the reasons for the referral back to the Planning Commission. The consent agenda is the first part of the planning and zoning agenda. Items on the consent agenda have received a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission. Unless there is a request to set aside an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the public, the Unified Government Commission, or staff, then the Planning Commission's recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Unified Government Commission at one time. I will read the list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I am completed the list, the mayor will ask if there are any requests to set aside items from the consent agenda. This is your time to raise your hand and request that an item be set aside if you do not agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. If you contacted the UG Clerk's Office, that item will be set aside by the UG Clerk on your behalf. If an item is set aside, the matter will be discussed and voted upon separately. All items not set aside will be approved with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening, and we recognize the importance of each petition. We would remind you that there are a number of items on the agenda, and we would appreciate your efforts to make your remarks as concise as possible. We ask that anyone who is joining us by Zoom or by phone to mute your phone when not speaking to avoid background noise, so you will not disturb the meeting. Once the petitioners make their presentation, anyone for or against will be allowed the maximum three minutes to state your views. This is your time to raise your hand. When your name is called, please state your name and city for the record. The mayor and commission are required to disclose contacts with proponents or opponents on any item on the planning and zoning agenda. I will ask if any member of the commission wishes to disclose any contact with proponents or opponents on any item on the agenda.
Thank you. I have had contact with proponents and opponents of the non-consent agenda item B1, CA 2021-019.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Phil, I'm sorry. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had contact with those both opposed and for non-consent item B1.
Commissioner Philbrook, I have had proponents and opponents of CA 2021-019.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Too much technology. I've had conversations with proponents of CA 2021-19.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Change of zone applications, item number one. 3241, Dana Blay with DBL Architecture, Inc. Change of zone from CP1 Plan Limited Business District to CP2 Plan General Business District. They had a fuel island for a fueling station or convenience store rebuild at 4732 State Avenue. Recommended for approval. Item two, COZ 2021-028. Andrea Waishvall with Atlas Surveyors. Change of zone from AG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family District to create one single-family residential lot at 13310 Leavenworth Road. Recommended for approval. Item three, COZ 2021-033. Michael Baronbaum with Hudson Apartments LLC. Change of zone from RP5 Plan Apartment District to RP6 Plan High-Rise Apartment District for a new 228-unit apartment building at 3600 Rainbow Boulevard. Recommended for approval. COZ 2021-035, Maricela Zamora. Change of zone from R1 Single Family District to AG Agricultural District to build accessory structures and farming activity at 449 North 86th Street. Recommended for approval. Item five, COZ 2021-036, Douglas Strand. Change of zone from CO Non-Residential Retail Business District to R2 Two-Family District for a single-family residence at 2211 North 13th Street. Recommended for approval to RP2 Plan Two-Family District. Item six, COZ 2021-042, Rachel Baikara with Good News Rentals LLC. Change of zone from R1 Single Family District to R2 Two-Family District to bring existing non-conforming duplex into compliance at 731 Tenny Avenue. Recommended for approval. Special use permit applications. Item one, SP 2021-046, Mary Hernandez. Special use permit for two horses on residential property at 1315 North 86th Street. Recommended for approval for two years. See miscellaneous ordinances. One, an ordinance rezoning property at 626 North 47th Street from MP1 Single Family Districts to MP2 Plan General Industrial District. Recommended for approval. Item two, an ordinance rezoning property at 2948 South 65th Street from R1 Single Family District to AG Agricultural District. Recommended for approval. Item three, an ordinance rezoning property at 3726 North 47th Street from R1 Single Family District to AG Agricultural District. Recommended for approval. Item four, an ordinance rezoning property at 2332 South 14th Street from R1 Single Family to CPO Plan Non-Retail Business District. Recommended for approval. Item five, an ordinance rezoning property at 1625 South 86th Street from MP1 Plan Light Industrial, Industrial Park and AG Agricultural Districts to MP3 Plan Heavy Industrial District. Recommended for approval. Item six, an ordinance rezoning property at 218 North 12th Street from R1 Single Family District to R2 Two-Family District. Recommended for approval. Item seven, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for live entertainment in a drinking establishment, neighborhood bar at 614 Reynolds Avenue. Recommended for approval. Item number eight, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a short-term rental at 4138 Lloyd Avenue. Recommended for approval. Item nine is an ordinance authorizing a home occupational special use permit to operate a dog daycare and boarding facility at 4001 North 74th Street. Recommended for approval. Item 10 is an ordinance authorizing a special use permit to operate a skate park and skate school at 230 South 65th Street. Recommended for approval. And that represents all of the items on tonight's agenda, consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission, the county administrator, or the public wish to set aside any item on the planning and zoning consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the planning and zoning consent agenda will be voted on by one vote to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'd ask the clerk, have we received any requests from the public to set aside an item?
None were received, Mayor.
All right. I will entertain a motion for approval of the planning and zoning consent agenda.
Move for approval, Commissioner Philbrook.
Second. Markley.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the planning and zoning non-consent agenda. Item number one is MPL 2021-026, amendments to the Kansas City, Kansas Landmarks Ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval. I'd ask staff to make some opening remarks.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Before you is an update to our historic landmarks and historic district ordinance together our historic preservation ordinance for the Unified Government. This was part of the original zoning code update that started a couple of years ago that got a little sidetracked during COVID-19. When we began the process to develop a downtown historic district and multiple listings for historic churches in downtown Kansas City, Kansas, the Landmarks Commission asked us to pull that piece of the zoning code overhaul out and move forward so that we would have the best available data, excuse me, during the outreach process that will happen for that project, which should get started here in another couple of weeks, days, maybe. But within that ordinance, there are a couple of changes that we'll review. There's three primary ones that I would note tonight, and happy to answer any questions at the end of this presentation regarding any others. But primarily, this is a, we are reducing the environs buffer from 500 feet to 200 feet. The environs buffer surrounds all historic districts and historic landmarks, and anything within that buffer has to go through an administrative review through the Department of Planning and Urban Design. So reducing that down to 200 feet. That was a big push by the Landmarks Commission, so we wanted to see that through. Secondly, we've added the notification requirement to our certificate of appropriateness projects moving forward. They will match all other notification requirements of our entitlements. So it's just like a change of zone master plan amendment, special use permit, and so on. You will have to do a 200-foot notice to adjacent properties. We'll publish it in the, we'll publish it in the newspaper, and we'll push it out all to the notice list as well, moving forward if approved. And then third, I think just generally, we took the opportunity to go through the, go through the ordinance and do as much as we could to provide additional clarity, and we will leave transparency to the ordinance. There's a bit of confusion around what is or is not an environs review, what is or is not a certificate of appropriateness. And so we added some definitions, provided some clarity in the process, and we believe have a better ordinance in front of you tonight. Again, the Planning Commission last month unanimously approved recommendation, and the Landmarks Commission did the same thing. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hand. Are there any questions from the commission? I'd ask the clerk, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this item? If so, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. And once acknowledged, you may state your name and address for the record. Well, you have three minutes to state your comments.
Seeing none.
All right. I'll ask the clerk, have we received any notification from the public who would like to express comments and opposition?
We did not, Mayor.
All right. And I see no one in the lobby?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. I will now close the public hearing. Again, any questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Markley, move to approve.
Ramirez, Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the Seventh Street Methodist Episcopal Church, South Historic Landmark for the construction of a downtown campus of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Landmarks Commission voted eight to one to approve. I'd ask staff to make some opening remarks, and I would ask that, first of all, that you describe what a certificate of appropriateness entails.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Just a quick point of clarification, before you tonight is not a certificate of appropriateness. That passed the Landmarks Commission at our November meeting. A certificate of appropriateness is what we call the permit, if you will, to do the work proposed on a historic structure or historic landmark on its exterior. Our ordinance only applies to the exterior appearance of historic structures and sites, not anything on the interior. If they become state or federal historically designated properties, then the interior of the property becomes a part of the review process for the state Historic Preservation Office. So we do have a mishmash of all of those things. Some of them are local, some of them are local and state, some of them are local, state, and federal. And so we kind of, so it's a bit of a mixed bag in terms of each one is unique in terms of what we have to do. So sometimes we have to send it to ship out, and sometimes we dump it. Again, a certificate of appropriateness, specifically the one for the church at Seventh and State, the Seventh Street Methodist Episcopal Church, which is the site of the Kansas City, Kansas Community Colleges Downtown Campus proposal, was again approved last November. The applicant has not appealed that decision to the Board of Commissioners. Instead, what we're considering tonight is another portion of the ordinance, and it's right down here on the screen for you, Section 27148, properties owned by public agencies. When this ordinance was originally written, we knew that we would have a situation just like this. And so this specific section of the ordinance requires the Board of Commissioners to make a determination that we did everything we could essentially to save or augment or restore said historic structures. And again, it applies to all public agencies. It just so happens that this proposal includes two public agencies, us who currently own it and the Community College who is requesting it from the land bank currently. So again, we're not here to hear anything about the certificate of appropriateness. That is technically a separate matter. Instead, we're here to make a determination. So tonight, I just wanted to go over quickly. We've had a lot of conversations about the value of the property and its history, architecturally, culturally, as well. And then I'll kind of go over sort of some of the thoughts that staff has in terms of making that determination. So again, if you read the code section in front of you, it's somewhat specific and particular for, again, minimizing the harm to such real property. So in this case, the Landmarks Commission approved the certificate of appropriateness to demolish that structure. So there is.
Gunnar?
Yes.
If you don't mind, so again, if I look at the agenda item, purpose is demolition of the Seventh Street Methodist Episcopal Church, South Historic Landmark, the construction of the downtown campus of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. What action will we be asking the commission to take tonight?
Tonight, we're asking the commission to make the determination that we did everything that we could to find an alternative to demolishing the structure.
So this comes under item number one. Unified Government Board of Commissioners has made a determination based on prudent consideration of all relevant factors that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the proposal and that the program includes all possible planning to minimize harm to such real property resulting from such use. So specifically, item one here.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
So, and I'm not, I mean, I think a lot of us know this church, it's right down the street from City Hall. But just to give us a little bit of background, I'll quickly run through that. This is the site of it, at Seventh and State. The Community College also received five other certificate of appropriateness for the other properties that you can see adjacent to the church on State Avenue for their demolition. They were also granted certificate of appropriatenesses to do that as well. They were also granted certificate of appropriatenesses to do that as well. Just a little bit of background about the church historically and what it is. Again, I think that this is one of the last pieces of high Gothic architecture in Kansas City, Kansas. We think it might be one of the last ones in all of Kansas City, Kansas and unified government. It's one of the last few in the entire metropolitan region. This congregation was included members from the, excuse me, the Armstrong, as well as Conley family. One of its last, one of the congregation's last big efforts was the protection and ultimately the saving of the Huron Cemetery. You may have all heard some of the stories about the Conley sisters sitting up there with shotguns, for instance. But over time, it's deteriorated. It's been in, it's been through a couple of different hands since the last congregation. It's been owned by the land bank for the last couple of years. In nineteen forty-one, there was a large storm that damaged the steeple in this historic photo, and it's been removed. The removal of that steeple has caused a significant amount of water damage, specifically in that spire, if you've ever been into the structure. So there is, it is in, it's in pretty bad shape, admittedly. So with all of that aside in the background, again, we find ourselves in front of, to ask ourselves the question specifically to that ordinance section. I will note for the C of A specifically, we did get a lot of community feedback, both pro and against. And in terms of staff's position on that determination, we do believe that we could have done more to preserve the structure. We do believe that there still is an opportunity for what we would call a win-win situation here. Early on, the landmarks commission asked staff to work with the community college to do really three primary things. First and foremost, to find an alternative site, so we didn't have to potentially demolish the church, knowing that that was a large leap based on the efforts the community college had already gone through for a site selection. The second request was to figure out a way to incorporate the historic church into the design of the downtown campus. And their third sort of tiered recommendation, if you will, was to move this, was to move the church somewhere else and preserve it in that fashion if the community college wanted to move forward. Essentially, none of those came to fruition. The C of A included some conditions of approval to include pieces, architectural historical pieces of the church into the new design. It's important to understand that that proposal in and of itself is against the Secretary of Interior Standards of Historic Preservation. So ultimately, staff believes that we still could find potentially a win-win solution. There are issues of the site that still need to be resolved by the community college. There is still funding that needs to be obtained to reach the funding goals to execute the project. We believe that we have a very philanthropic community. If we did more to communicate the value of the church, that there could potentially be somebody out there. Again, that's pretty far off, but we do believe that that's a potential alternative. And again, I think before you tonight, staff is asking the, the commission to think about this as a win-win situation. There was a lot of conversation around the C of A about, we've let it deteriorate for this long. You know, somebody could have come along with the project to fix it. This is the project. This is our opportunity to save this church, in staff's opinion. So I know that that's a little bit confusing. I know that this code section is a little obtuse, so if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to work through it as best I can.
Let me.
We do have, and I apologize, we do have legal counsel on, on as well, who can assist me if needed.
So to be clear, the staff is recommending denial of the request of this certificate of appropriateness for demolition.
That is incorrect. The certificate of appropriateness has been approved.
Right.
It's set. We are not hearing the certificate of appropriateness. If the applicant wanted to appeal the decision, i.e. the approval to demolish the church, to the Board of Commissioners, that would be the conversation tonight. But because this historic property is owned by a public agency, we are beholden to this section of the code, which basically asks the commission to make the determination that we did everything we could to save the church. Staff does not believe we can make that determination.
All right. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm not the only one here in this room that is about to add, about to ask this question. And I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you're trying to get there, but I'm still confused. What exactly are we, if you're asking us to deny? Because that's where I'm confused.
Right. So it's a, it'll be a, I mean, I think the motion technically would be a determinate, a determination that we did do everything we could to find an alternative to save this church, or that we did not. So I don't, I think, again, I apologize for misleading with some of my slides here. It's not an approval or a denial necessarily. It's simply the recognition that we did or did not do everything that we could to save, to save this property.
Okay. So I think I'm just going to have to forget the word deny and just use the words determine or not determined, is what I, I think I need to get into my head. Okay, thank you. This has been this church, and of course, this project and everything has been very talked about within the community. I will say, I will say I support staffs of saying we have not done everything we could. I cannot, I don't have the faith in me to vote to say we have. As I am working with ACA, Melissa Seeburn, to save another historic monument in our community, I can't say that we haven't done. Because unfortunately, we, as a community, as a governing body, as a government, we don't do everything we can to save our historic monuments. It is part of our history. I'm very passionate about it because I lost one already. And so if staff and community members, if we can find a way to preserve it and save it and really say we did everything we could, then let's do that. And I'm, I'm a person that, I cherish history. It was bred into me as I grew up. I learned where I came from, my family came from, and that, that's why it's any historic monument, anytime I see the words demolish, it hurts me. Because then that's a piece of us that's being taken away. Yes, we have stories. Yes, we have pictures. Yes, we have video. But it's different when you can actually experience it. Especially the church where in my district, we, I had family, family friends, I had, we, who were, who got married in that church, who have memories and who wanted to save it. But we did nothing to help with it. And I thank Melissa Seeburn for working with the community, for trying to save and continuing to work with them to save Sour Castle. So the thank you to the planning staff for all you're doing and for trying to find out, to find how to preserve this. Thank you.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I guess my question, maybe both to Gunner, but maybe more to this commission, is what happens if we, if we follow staff's recommendation? Because no one's come along in all this time to make or spend the effort to work on this building. We certainly do not have the budget or the capacity to work on this building. I mean, I, the sentiments are, are, I'm not, I'm not saying those sentiments aren't there. I appreciate Commissioner Ramirez's passion, but at the same time, unless our, unless we have some resources we're willing to put toward this, what are we saying if we say we didn't, you know, we didn't do everything we could, we think we're going to do more? What is the more we think we're going to do because we do not have the budget or capacity to fix this building? If we had that budget or capacity, we probably wouldn't have let it get into the state that it's come to begin with. So I have concerns about saying we're going to take this on when we really don't have the ability to take this on.
If I may, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, I think there's three things. One, it's still our property. It may have a C of A for demolition. It doesn't have a demo permit, and it's still a land bank property. It is still controlled by the unified government. Two, they haven't fully funded the whole project. I think that we could potentially, with our partners at the community college, go out and actively, intentionally try to find a philanthropist who was going to potentially give them money and see if they would give us more money to save the church. Through their work, the community college determined it would cost maybe around five million dollars to save the church. I don't know if that's a valid number or not, but seventy-five million dollars instead of seventy million dollars isn't a large leap when you're talking about a big old project like this. And third, there are billions of federal dollars coming down, and a lot of that could be used for this project, and a lot of that is being proposed currently for potentially the community college. We could potentially get money from the federal government to fill that gap and potentially cause a redesign of the project. Again, we are supportive. The master plan is supportive of the idea of this thing in downtown. We just really had hoped that we could save this church, and we do still feel strongly that this is our opportunity to do it.
Commissioner Markley, continue if you like.
Well, yeah, so, so following up on Gunner's comments, so are, Gunner, are you saying that the community college is interested in doing fundraising? Regardless of what we said, couldn't the community college, I mean, they're not going to demolish it tomorrow. I guess I'm confused again about what our role is and why it has to be done right now, why something needs to be done right now.
Community college wants to move forward as fast as, as fast as possible with the project.
They want to move forward with the project, or they want to move forward with the demolition? Because I think a second ago, you made it sound like they were interested in potentially fundraising to do something different with this church as part of their project.
I am not speaking for the community college at all. What I'm saying specifically is that they are in the process of raising money. If we worked in partnership with them, we could change the direction of that fundraising and ask specifically if there's anybody out there who would be willing to save the church. It's a possibility, is simply all I'm saying. But the, the conditions of, the conditions applied to the certificate of appropriateness, which was approved to demolish the church, included, included that they have to go through essentially meet their fundraising goals first, then go through the entitlement process second, before they can receive their demo permits. So it's not outside of anything we would ask of any other project.
Commissioner Bynum?
Mayor, thank you. My question is about the process here in front of us. We are on a planning and zoning non-consent agenda item, and normally in our meetings for planning and zoning items, we hear from staff, then we hear from the applicant, and then we hear from the commissioners. And so it's a, I have a process question as to why we're not doing that right now.
I, I don't think that we consider the community college as the applicant here. I think this is coming from staff. Is that correct, Gunner?
I defer to legal counsel. I mean, technically, yes, this is our agenda item.
But there will be an opportunity, obviously, for, for us to hear from the public, so. Commissioner, so Misty, do you have a?
Yes, Mayor, this is Misty Brown, Chief Counsel for the Unified Government. So my understanding of this, of this process that we're in today is we have, the landmarks commission had made this determination that everything that was feasible and prudent had been done to save this building to proceed with the demolition. So in this one, it does seem confusing with the process that you would hear from the community college, but it's the commission's determination to decide tonight, did we do everything that was feasible and prudent to save the building, and we proceed with the demolition? Or in the alternative, we have not done everything that was feasible and prudent to say, to not demolish the building. Therefore, we want them to go back and either save the building or take these other steps before we make the determination that we wish to save the building. And so that is something by ordinance, the commission has to decide.
Thank you. So again, just to be clear, this is not an application brought forward by the community college.
That's correct, Mayor.
That's correct. Okay. So I am going to open this up to public comment. So Commissioner Johnson, if you would, Commissioner Ramirez, if you would wait until we go to, unless you have questions of Mr. Hand, I would prefer, rather than comments, only questions. Commissioner Ramirez?
Not get along with our planning director.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believed you said that we would continue with the public hearing first, and then.
Yes. But unless you have, unless you have questions of Mr. Hand.
I do, but we, let's hear from the public, and then we can get back to the discussion.
All right. Commissioner Johnson?
I agree. I'll, I have questions, but I'll wait for public as well.
Right. So the first, I'll open the public hearing, ask the clerk if we received any notification from the public, wish to express their comments in favor of this item, which is, again, denial? Gunner, correct me. Give me the right language here.
It's a determination.
Okay, determination.
On whether we did everything or we didn't do everything. And again, as legal counsel noted, if, if the determination is that we did not do enough, we could have a conversation about what we could do.
And so you, staff has said, we have not done everything we could do.
Correct.
All right. So anyone who would like to speak in support of that opinion from staff?
Mayor, if I may, this is Brett Dykler, the Unified Government Clerk. Our office did receive a response or a, a request to read in favor for this from Ms. Rosalynn Brown, and I think this is where that goes in, in favor, if you would like me to read that now.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll read the way it is exactly written. It says, "I would like to support the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Education Center proposed for the downtown Kansas City, Kansas area. I believe this is what our community needs to bridge the educational divide in our community. There have been a lot of promises made to make a difference in our community. To this date, only parts of our community have benefited. The opportunity to make a difference in people's lives is what the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is proposing. Giving people the tools to provide for themselves and their family is a benefit to the entire community." As Lau Su said there, that if you give a hungry man a fish, you feed him for a day, but if you teach him to fish, you feed him for a lifetime. Please support this opportunity to make a difference in the entire community. Thank you. I would also note, Mayor, that Dr. Mosier from the Uni, or from the Kansas City, Kansas Community Colleges has been promoted if he's.
Let, let's be clear. We're asking, first of all, those in support of the determination that we have not done enough. So that, actually, the comments from Ms. Brown would be in opposition, so that'll be an opportunity for that. So let's just add those to the comments in opposition to staff's statement that we have not done enough. Right? So is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of staff determination that we have not done enough? Anyone with their hands up?
We don't see any, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Right now, I'd ask the clerk if we received any notification from the public who wish to express their comments in opposition to the finding from staff that we have not done enough. And so I think this is when Dr. Mosier would weigh in.
Dr. Mosier?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry it took me a while to get promoted back again. First, I have to express a, a lot of confusion on what is going on tonight. If you read the agenda item, it's for the certificate of appropriateness of application for this project, for the demolition of the church on Seventh Street, Seventh Avenue and Seventh Street and State Avenue. What I'm hearing tonight is not anything that has been discussed prior, and it's not in the agenda. We were informed that this is an application that would go to the full commission to support the landmarks commission to allow the college to carefully deconstruct the church and spend a significant amount of money, about five hundred thousand dollars, to very carefully and purposefully integrate elements of the church into the new facility. It will be about five and a half million dollars to restore the church. I believe earlier, Director Hand said that we had done. I believe earlier Director Hand said that we had done, that the staff had done everything to look at options to save the church in its current form, and now I'm hearing the opposite. And to clarify the college's position on this, the college has no intent and we will not go further to seek funding from other sources to reser, to restore, or actually it has to be rebuilt, it's in such bad shape, to rebuild that shit, that church in its current form. It is not the mission of the Community College to do this. Our mission is to provide education and training to better improve the employability and the socioeconomic status of our community. So we have no desire and no intent to do that. That has been clearly communicated. The project, as we talk about, is a seventy million dollar economic development package. It's not just the Community College. It is in combination with the YMCA, Windout Behavioral Health, Swope Healthcare, and Community America Credit Union to offer a holistic solution to help solve some of the socioeconomic disparities that have it, that have occurred in downtown KCK in northeast Kansas City, Kansas for over thirty years. The church has been boarded up for more than twenty-five years. The Unified Government has not owned this church for several years. It just took possession of the church and one of the.
Dr. Mosier, you have one minute remaining.
Most recent land sales. So we are here to provide opportunity for economic development, for social mobility, for downtown Kansas City, Kansas. And the conversation that is taking place tonight is not in alignment with what is on the agenda or what we have been informed. So our motion, our request is that we be, that this certificate of appropriateness, that the commission moves it forward, that everything has been done. And we have done that, and the land bank, the Landmarks Commission has agreed to that, and that's why they approved it, eight to one. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, would you clarify where we are legally?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Misty Brown, Chief Counsel. And I do want to clarify that Dr. Mosier is correct. What's on the agenda tonight is that the Lands, the Landmarks Commission recommended approval of issuing the certificate of appropriateness to, you know, to proceed. So it is staff's recommendation that is contrary to landmarks, but that recommendation that's on the agenda, on the agenda was for approval.
Thank you. So we are voting to approve the landmark recommendation, correct?
Well, Mayor, a resolution could go either way. But when we were talking about, you know, pro and con, what's on the agenda was for approval. So when we are asking for those who are in favor, it'd be in favor of going ahead and recommending the certificate of appropriateness. The commission could choose not to do that and make a, a different motion if they like.
Thank you.
If I may, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Plan and Urban Design. A decision by the Landmarks Commission only goes to the Board of Commissioners if it's if it is appealed to the Landmarks Commission. The certificate of appropriateness has been settled, and I apologize for the confusion on the agenda. That's my fault.
So again, I want to be clear, because I'm now, do we have anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Mr. Dykler?
Yes, yes, Mayor, we were just verifying we have Mr. Kendall.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kendall?
Good evening, Mayor, UG Commissioners. I'm Greg Kendall, President of the Windout Economic Development Council, located at seven twenty-seven Minnesota KCK in a resident KCK. We believe all has been done to preserve the Seventh Street Methodist Church. It is time to move forward. In a perfect world, the former church would not have been largely left abandoned and left to decay. This site has not had maintenance in decades. A small tree grows out of the bell tower, its steeple long removed. Today, the site is locked and falling farther and farther into disrepair. It is a safety and fire hazard to the downtown, not just to itself, but to the downtown itself. I wish there was a perfect resolution where there was a user and the money needed to restore this church to the form of glory or to relocate them to a different location, but that hasn't happened. And I don't believe the UG has the resources to do it either. The last potential user we had that went through that church some years back explored it for use as a brewery, but the costs were way too far then even to consider renovations, and there were parking concerns. It is time to move forward. What is left today is barely a shell of a building. Our Community College, who wants to build a seventy million dollar downtown campus on this site that will preserve key elements of the church and its history for thousands of students, patrons, and guests. It is an investment in our community for our residents. We support KCK Community College's vision of incorporating the past into this new facility to continue investing in our downtown, generate pride in our community, bring people from diverse backgrounds into the downtown to learn and engage in the community's future, and support the larger socioeconomic growth of the area. I thank you for consideration and ask that we move forward with the demolition of this facility. And again, I would concur with Dr. Mosier. This is a very confusing process and seems a bit unusual, the way in which this has come forward based on what was on the agenda.
Mr. Kendall, you have one minute?
This has been a disappointing process, to be honest, and I would just note that it doesn't seem quite fair, frankly, to the Community College that the UG's staff is working against the project, but then has to live with all of the staff recommendations. So I just, I would request that there be some review of this, however it moves forward. I feel like the Community College has done everything in their way that they could to follow the process and do the right thing, but they keep getting stymied, and this is once again, one of those situations where it seems very confusing. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dykler. Is there anybody else present who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have a Randy Calstrom.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is Randy Calstrom. I'm the President and CEO of Windout Behavior Health Network and located at seven fifty-seven Armstrong KCK, and we are one of the partners in this project, along with the Community College, the YMCA, Swope Health, and Community America. The vision that Dr. Mosier has laid out for a comprehensive education, health, and wellness campus in downtown KCK is, in, in my view, critical to the future of the community. As a mental health professional over the last thirty years serving Windout County, I, we have worked with individuals, adults, children, families who have struggled with generational poverty, with, with trauma, with mental illness and substance abuse. And, and the common thread in that is the loss of hope. And, and not to sound overly dramatic, but hope is essential for anyone's future, and it's essential for a community's future as well. And that's what I think this downtown campus can bring. It, it's hope for the community and the individuals and the families who live there. And, and I would simply ask, in terms of the denial that is being proposed tonight, to consider are there viable options? Are there viable alternatives to what could be done in a cost-effective, cost-efficient way? And, and in a timely way as well. And strongly urge you to vote and deny, and not in support of the proposed denial. Thank you.
Mr. Dykler, anyone else?
We don't see anyone at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close. Well, is there anyone in the fifth, I'm sorry, in the lobby who would like to speak?
Seeing none as well.
Thank you. Now I'll close the public hearing. Again, I will now return to commission questions and comments. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is a phrase we've been saying, hearing a lot, to clarify, Misty. When this goes to a vote, what does a yes mean? What does a no mean?
Commissioner, that is going to depend on the, on how the motion is structured, on whether you're going to vote on it. If it would be helpful, Dan Kuhn is the UG attorney who's been advising on the landmarks. He is here. I think it'd be helpful if everyone could hear from Dan to hear about the standard that we need to consider when we're making these votes. So Dan, if you could turn on your camera and.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Camera should be on if I'm not mistaken. Um, Commissioners, the ordinance, UG Code twenty-seven one forty-eight requires that you make a determination based on prudent consideration of all relevant factors, that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the proposal. And that would be the certificate of appropriateness, and that the program includes all possible planning to minimize harm to such real property resulting from such use. If you vote yes tonight, then you would be in, again, depending on the motion, but you would in essence be saying that there are, that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the proposal, and that the program includes all possible planning to minimize harm. If you decide to vote no, then you would be finding that it is not a feasible, feasible and prudent alternative to the proposal, and that the program does not include all possible planning to minimize harm. And if that is the case, then as legal counsel, I would also recommend that you propose alternatives and actions that might minimize harm so that the Landmarks Commission might consider those if a certificate of appropriateness is, is then filed subsequent to, to the vote. And I hope that clarified things. If I confused anybody, I apologize, and I'm, I'm more than willing to answer for the questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
Ramirez, are you? Okay, all right. Yeah. I appreciate the, the great amount of concern Gunnar regarding this request. And I believe that it's right for us to have done so. I am like my colleague, Commissioner Ramirez, I am a great fan of historical monuments. My church is really just a storefront church. It's a large storefront church, but it's a storefront church nonetheless. But I've also been a fan of historical facilities. I'm so glad that we, what the the PAL program, the Police Department, has done with the facility right off of Fifth Street. And I think that's a great repurposing of that building. I'm aware that this facility was originally a Methodist church, but for decades it was the Ebenezer Church of God in Christ, which I am very familiar with. I am personally knew as a child all of the pastors. The founding pastor, Pastor Prattis Henry, the next pastor, Pastor George Cogs, and then finally Pastor George Kemper before he moved on. The site is very near and dear to my heart. However, I have to say that this, this site has become detrimental to public safety. It's already been stated already. It is literally deteriorating within itself. And it is landlocked. There is, there is, there is no parking for this site, never has been. And so when we talk about renovating this facility, it's always a cry that comes from the public about how it could have been renovated or should be renovated, but never, there's never any money that comes forward. I'm thinking right now about the Quinidero ruins. And every time, you know, and there's just great concern about Quinidero ruins, but nobody, whether it be public or private, has come forward with any money, including the United Unified Government, to, to restore the Quinidero ruins to their glory, to its glory, which I think would be a fabulous site for tourism throughout the nation. And so we look at this, this, this site here as Ebenezer and, and the fact that it has sat dormant. And I think, you know, if anybody has a desire to, to renovate it, that, that, that should have come by now. The question that I have is who determines whether or not we have done everything that needs to be done to save the property? Over what period of time? Do we need to ascertain that? Because to me, it seems to be a subjective determinant, determination. You know, have we had any, a request from anyone or any other group to renovate this property? We've already talked about the fact that it's going to cost five million dollars at least. And then do we require confirmation of the financial capacity of all applicants that desire to deconstruct structures that are not using a capital campaign to fund the project? So if they want to do it with just private dollars out of their own pocket, do we try to find out whether they have the financial capacity before we allow them to move forward? I got to tell you, I, I rarely disagree with staff recommendations. But I think right now, I believe that the requirements that we are having before us tonight are confusing. I think that we need, I don't, I'm going to look to legal counsel to, to word this just right, but I'm going to say this, I want the project to move forward. I want to be very clear about that. I want the project to move forward. It's passed the Landmarks Commission. I'm satisfied with what they have said. It's time for us to, to move forward and, and not be so, and, and I don't want to insult anyone, but I believe we're being heavy-handed trying to derail or slow down this process. I want to move this process forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Hand and then a comment. Mr. Hand, I heard you say a decision from the Landmarks Commission only comes to the full commission if, and then I didn't hear the rest of what you said, so I don't know what, what you said. The conditions are.
Commissioner Bynum, Gunnar Hand, Director of Plan and Urban Design. CVA's only come before the Board of Commissioners if they're appealed to the Board of Commissioners.
And so this one is in front of us. Why?
This one is in front of us because there is a, there is a code, there is a section in our historic preservation code specific to properties owned by public agencies, which, which hold us to a higher bar for the historic preservation, more so than a private entity to maintain this civic infrastructure, if you will.
I'm going to express my extreme frustration with how confusing this is for me. And my frustration level is high in addition because I have watched as staff and the Landmarks Commission both required of the Community College, who I'm going to call the applicant, is that a fair thing to call the Community College?
Sure.
Even though we own the building?
Correct.
What we have repeatedly asked of the college through this process caused them hours upon hours upon hours of time, research, and I don't know how much money. And it produced reams of reports and findings, if I'm not mistaken. And Dr. Mosier and his team did every single thing that we said, go back and do this. Now go back and do this. And they did, and they don't own the building yet. And I, I don't even think I can adequately express my frustration level with this, with what we're doing tonight, with how confusing it is, with how radically different it sounds tonight than it does in our agenda packet. with how radically different it sounds tonight than it does in our agenda packet. I have to reiterate that. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm so irritated that that I'm sitting here keeping myself from some of the things that I want to say. Um, and I'm not doing a very good job of it. But I'm beside myself with my frustration level of what we're, what we are faced with, and it's embarrassing. So I'm sorry. I apologize. Um, I think one of the reasons why this process is is difficult and has been difficult all along is because, you know, I do think that one of the arenas where Unified Government maybe could use more talent is, um, in the historic preservation arena. And I don't say that to be critical of staff. Our staff is extremely talented. But I think we would all admit that we don't have historic preservation expertise among us. And if we do, and I don't know it, I apologize, but I think that that's a, I just think perhaps maybe this process might have been different. Um, and I'm going to stop talking, um, but I'm going to support Commissioner Johnson's statement that the beginning efforts of the community colleges' desire to go out and privately raise seventy million dollars to build a downtown campus to make our community better began pre-COVID, which means it's more than two years ago. It's possibly closer to three years ago, if I remember correctly. So, so it just adds to my frustration level about the conversation that we're having tonight. So I will yield the floor. Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, and again, I, I do apologize for all the confusion on the agenda. This is the first time that this commission and this department has ever exercised this part of our code. Um, Ms. Parker and our staff has never recalled a time we've used that. That doesn't mean necessarily we shouldn't have, but it is the first time. So this is new for all of us. And I appreciate everybody's patience as we walk through this. Staff believes that we have been defending the ordinance throughout the entire process, and on this agenda item specifically, it is here for two reasons, to have this conversation, which I appreciate everyone at the Board of Commissioners and everybody here today having this conversation about this project, whichever way we go at the end of the day is half of it. And then again, it gives us the opportunity to, to potentially do something about it if we so choose. The determination is your decision, obviously.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just again wanted to echo what's been said several times tonight. What we are being asked to vote up or down on is not in the homework package, the way it appears. Um, uh, too, I'm concerned about the fact that this building has been in a state of disrepair for some years. And now to suggest that something might be done to restore it through, um, the community college, who clearly has another goal for this building. Um, the other thing that is a bit confusing or not clear from the homework material, the package material, is that what staff is recommending, I don't necessarily see supported here. However, what I do see in the packet material, homework material, is some evidence that there will be preservation of parts of the church if the college's project moves forward as it desires to do. So either we vote on something tonight, or if we feel we don't have enough information to do so, but I'm going to propose a motion that gets to what I think Mr. Hand is asking this body to do. So I'm proposing that this body make a motion that the Unified Government has done all it can do to save the church. Uh, and that there is no feasible alternative, uh, to the proposal to demolish the subject church.
Second. Second. Okay.
Uh, thank you. We have a motion and a second, I believe, Commissioner Philbrook?
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. Um, I would, uh, just want to comment. I think what, uh, just on, and I want to speak on behalf of staff, but I think what staff is trying to say is when they to do their due diligence to make sure that they have exhausted all possibilities for the, uh, the preservation of this church, they obviously did not come to the conclusion that they could say without a doubt that all avenues had been, had been explored or everything had been done. So again, back to Commissioner Johnson's point, it is, it seemed arbitrary, or it seems, I guess arbitrary, I'm sorry, subjective to, to really look at this and to say, and if, as Gunner, uh, Mr. Hand says, there is lots of federal funding out there, well, that's good, but again, that's a, a burden to hand is worth two in the bush, right? And so, uh, I think what I'm hearing from the commission is that, well, given the history of this property and given the many decades that it has sat unoccupied and uncared for, we really in fact have reached a point where practically speaking, uh, there is no money on the horizon. It's not in the capacity of the, or as part of the plan for the community college to go out and seek that funding. Certainly, we would say, I would say for Unified Government, we do not have the funding for this. Uh, we would have saved Sour Castle a long time ago, I think, if that were the case. Um, and it is unfortunately a loss of another historic structure. And so what we, to Commissioner Bynum's point, that we would have more expertise and more intentionality on the part of our, uh, Unified Government and our, uh, private entities to really seek out those historic structures that are in danger of being lost and to be proactive now so that we don't reach this point where it is impractical to take anything else. Commissioner Markley?
Actually, um, I raise my hand on behalf of Commissioner Philbrook. I don't know if she has additional comments in addition to her second.
So I want to thank Commissioner Townsend because I'd already written this up. I was ready to rock and roll. But thank you, Commissioner Townsend, for letting me second you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I will say I'm going to be the lone no vote tonight. Um, I believe in economic development. I believe in the mission of what KC KCC is trying to do. But in good faith, I cannot vote for this. It, it, we're doing economic development in spite of our history. So I, it's just, like I said, bred in me, bred in me about history. I cannot vote for this. And Dr. Mosher, that's not, it's nothing of that about you or what the community college is trying to do. I completely support it. Education is the bedrock of any community. But again, I cannot support when it does in spite of our history.
All right, I, we have a motion, and let's be clear what that motion is. Uh, Misty, can you clarify for us what our motion is?
Uh, yes, Misty Brown, Chief Counsel, Commissioner Townsend has has moved to approve the recommendation of the community college and as part of her motion stated that she believes they have done everything that was prudent and reasonable to, and there's no other prudent or reasonable solution other than to go forward with the project. Commissioner Townsend, did I miss something?
Well, I, I think the language I wanted to use, and this is what I took from, uh, Mr. Hand, that this body has to, the Board of Commissioners has to say that the Unified Government, um, that we're making the determination, this body is making a determination that the Unified Government has done all it can do to save the church, and there's no feasible alternative to the proposal to demolish the subject church, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. So we have a clarification on the motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
I need clarification. My aye vote means what?
Misty Brown, Chief Counsel, it means you are, your aye vote is in favor of the recommendation of the Landmarks Commission allowing the project to proceed.
The project meaning demolition of this building. Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKeonan?
Aye.
Ramirez?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
The vote is eight to one that motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting. We now move to the regular portion of our agenda. Does any member of the Commissioner or County Administrator wish to set aside any item on the regular consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the regular consent agenda will be voted on by one vote. And I would like to set aside item number three for a very brief presentation. Any other requests to set aside?
McKeonan, District Two, move to approve all items as submitted, all other items as submitted.
Johnson, second.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. So that takes us to set aside item number three. This is in agreement with Credit and Home Ownership Empowerment Services to support the Bank On program. And I set this aside simply because I think it is important for, uh, there to be a public record and presentation about the significant, um, advantages, benefits that this will provide to many in our community for financial empowerment. So I'd recognize Justin Walker from Credit and Home Ownership Empowerment Services to make a presentation. And Mr. Walker, I'm asking you to be brief but complete.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate all of the time this evening. Uh, I appreciate the fact too that, uh, that was a very lengthy discussion before this, so I will do my best to, uh, be as brief as possible. As you mentioned, I am here, uh, in support of the agreement between Chess Inc., which is my organization, and Unified Government to support the Bank On initiative. Bank On is a national initiative by the cities for financial empowerment that aims to help individuals who are unbanked and underbanked get connected to safe, affordable bank accounts and out of predatory lending institutions. Uh, across the entire metro, and, uh, we're speaking about the entire KC Metroplex here, all twelve counties on both sides of the state line. We know that there are about fifteen percent of the individuals living in our community that are either unbanked or underbanked, and the purpose of this coalition really is to work in concert with, uh, other community-based organizations, nonprofits, practitioners who are working uh, with individuals who are in need of safe, affordable bank accounts, as well as our local municipalities, to promote policies that, uh, go forward and really set a path, uh, for financial success in our communities. And that can range from anything for seniors living on a fixed income to high schoolers who are graduating and starting their careers. You know, we know that there is a need again for safe, affordable bank accounts, uh, across the spectrum and in all sectors of our communities. And Bank On certified products are available, uh, and, and about half of the bank branches across the country right now. And our work here in the Kansas City, uh, metro is to really bring along not only more of those accounts, uh, to be available to consumers, but more consumers to take advantage of them. And we have been, uh, very fortunate to have great partners in U G, uh, as evidenced by this M O U that is before the commission this evening. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Again, I think this is something I really wanted to highlight for our community that, um, we really do want to provide these kinds of service, these opportunities for so many of those who are banked or underbanked. Um, a very safe, secure way for them to enter the financial system and to grow their wealth and protect their wealth. So any questions or comments? And then entertain a motion.
Commissioner Markley moved to approve.
McKeonan, second.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, next is a public hearing to consider the Unified Government's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Hudson Apartments Limited Liability Corporation. Ask Catherine Carter to make some opening remarks.
So can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Um, thank you so much. This is Catherine Carter, Director of Economic Development. Um, we have a brief presentation tonight, uh, before the public hearing. Uh, this is, so let me share my screen really quick. Okay. Uh, this is a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds not to exceed forty-eight million dollars uh, for the Hudson apartment project at thirty-eight hundred Rainbow Boulevard. Um, before I go into the financial portion of this, I'm going to ask Michael Baronbaum from Lane Four, uh, to give you a brief overview of the project.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Alvey. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, on behalf of our partnership, which includes Lane Four Property Group, Hunt Midwest and the K U Endowment. We're excited about the proposed project at the corner of Thirty-Six and Rainbow Boulevard. Uh, the site, as highlighted on the screen there, is currently, um, approximately thirty-six, uh, multifamily units. Um, and we are proposing to demolish the existing improvements and, uh, construct, there's a, a quick look at, uh, at, uh, the, the, the current improvements um, and construct a new two-hundred-twenty-eight unit, uh, multifamily project. It will include two stories of structured parking. Uh, the project will be completely, uh, sufficient in terms of handling its own parking needs on site. And above that parking podium, uh, five stories, which will include two-hundred-twenty-eight units of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. Uh, there's a, a site plan, a floor plan that shows, uh, the unit layout, and you can see in the center a courtyard, uh, which will be the highlight of, of many amenities that are included in the project, including a swimming pool, a fitness center, uh, a co-working space, a rooftop, uh, concierge space. There's some views of the architecture. I am not an architect, so I will not attempt to articulate all the features. I'll let the beautiful renderings speak for themselves. The, uh, lead designer on the project is Nicole Curry with Studio A, and she's being supported by B R R Architecture as well. Here's a quick rundown of some of those amenities that I just mentioned. We are very excited to bring this project. Lane Four has had great experience, um, in the Rosedale Corridor, most notably with the Thirty-Nine Rainbow Project just up the street from here. Uh, our partners Hunt Midwest have extensive experience in the, uh, residential, uh, and, and really across all asset class of development. Their company is owned by the Hunt family, uh, the owner of our Kansas City Chiefs, Brenner Holland, uh, the head of their residential division, the Hunt Midwest Residential Division is here with us tonight, if there's any questions for him as well. And, uh, we can flip through a few more renderings. I'm, I'm doing my- more renderings. I'm doing my best to be brief. I hope I'm not doing, going too quickly. That is the fifth-floor club-level room, which features amenities for residents that would like to host and socialize. There's an indoor space right on the left side of that glass. And interestingly enough, our architects actually flew a drone up to the height of, of where this fifth floor will be. And if everybody here is familiar with the topography in Rainbow Boulevard, it really allows for some dramatic views when you're looking at Kansas City, Missouri there. Of course, I'd love to see the rendering around the corner, heading back towards downtown KCK. But it'll be, it'll be a cool space up there at the top of the project.
Thank you.
Because this is a, sorry, thank you, Mayor. One last comment, because this is an urban redevelopment, and we are using structured parking to maximize the density and, and propose a project that we believe is consistent with the Rosedale Master Plan. There are some extraordinary costs involved with, with the development of the project. We've worked with Catherine Carter and, and staff to propose industrial revenue bonds as, as outlined here. And as I believe Ms. Carter can articulate further.
You're muted, Catherine.
Thank you. As Michael mentioned, this is a $48 million project. We're particularly excited and supportive of the fact that this is very much in line with the Rosedale Master Plan and the more specific University Town District Plan. You know, there, it was really all about increasing the density along Rainbow Boulevard and then having that kind of stair step down as you get into the neighborhood. This, you know, to have a 44-unit apartment complex right now that is currently paying $47,000 in property tax annually, which is not that much. So to have that, you know, be demolished and to have something of this quality, that we really do not have anything similar in, you know, certainly in the Rosedale area, particularly the fact that we have, of course, KU health systems directly across the street. There's, you know, 10,000 employees there that, you know, we would like them to live in KCK and give them a wealth of options to do so. So what we are proposing is industrial revenue bond financing. This is very similar to what we've seen, you all have approved in the past with a number of different multifamily projects. You know, what we're, we're looking at would be a, a fixed pilot. Again, this is, you know, a payment in lieu of taxes. This is not, nothing to do with the, the pilot that you see on your BPU bill. This is purely a payment that goes to, you know, that gets paid annually as a way to kind of pay back what, what we are abating through this, this financing mechanism. So we're looking at a projected value of $66,000 per unit and doing an average $1,012 annual pilot per door. So that starts with that first year at just over $200,000 per year, and there is a 2% escalator. So over the course of 10 years, the Unified Government and other taxing jurisdictions will recollect a total of $2.3 million in pilot payments. As with all of our projects that receive any kind of incentive from the Unified Government, there are LMW goals that are in place with this and a penalty if those are not met. We have every assurance that these will be met. And I would like to mention that, you know, well before this project had even, you know, put in their, their application for the industrial revenue bonds, or I think even to planning, they had already met with procurement and wanted to understand how those goals are, are put in place and, and what they can do to ensure that they're successful. So we're really happy with their due diligence there. Additionally, the 8 mil that is statutory required, that will be paid separately and collected separately. So just when we're looking at kind of that snapshot, that annual benefit, as I mentioned before, the current property pays about $47,000 in property taxes annually. During this 10 years of, of kind of incentive time, they'll be paying an average of $230,000 in payments annually. So that's quite a big, big increase. And then, of course, at the end of 10 years, when they'll be appraised, we don't know what that number would be, but my guess is it will be about a million dollars. Additionally, this is, you know, 228 units and all the additional residents that that entails for that area. We anticipate quite a lot of additional sales tax generation for the area of retail, particularly that 39th and Rainbow. So the timeline there, you can see, they're hoping to start construction this fall. It's about a two-year construction timeline. Just for a quick snapshot of what that pilot payment looks like, this is the pilot schedule that would be locked in, as well as those LMW goals there at the bottom. And if you have any questions, we're here, I can answer them as well as Michael from Lane Four and other folks from the other partners. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Ask the clerk, have we received any notification from the public who would like to express comments in favor of this?
We did not, Mayor.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this item?
Saying none.
Is, have we received any comments from the public in opposition?
We did not, Mayor.
Anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? I think that is a no.
We do, we do have someone just.
Member of the public.
We do have someone from the public who would like to speak in opposition?
We know what it is, Bridget. Greg Kendall.
Greg Kendall actually raised his hand to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you. Greg, Greg.
Mayor, UG Commissioners, I'm Greg Kendall, President of the Wind Out Economic Development Council, located at 727 Minnesota KCK and a resident of KCK. I'm here in support of the applicant, Hudson Apartments, located at 3600 Rainbow Boulevard. We are excited about this redevelopment of the current Cambridge West apartment complex for 228 apartments and an investment of 48 million. This project conforms with the Rosedale Master Plan and reinforces the plan to place residential density along Rainbow. Additionally, it provides a quality residential development within Kansas City, Kansas, to meet the growing demand for housing by healthcare professionals on the KU medical campus that now employs nearly 12,000. This is a desperately needed investment in this area of the community. We appreciate the work of the UG team and the developer to propose a property tax agreement that will generate nearly five times more in property taxes in the first year than is currently generated at that location. And the additional residents living in the area will contribute to the existing evening and weekend retail sales tax generation to support those retailers in the area. And finally, I would just commend the developer, Lane Four Property Group, Hunt Midwest and KU Endowment, on bringing this forward. They've been working on this for some time, but we, we know that they're going to do a good job just by looking at the development at 39 Rainbow and how that's transformed that, that part of the corridor. We appreciate them and their team for, once again, choosing to invest in Kansas City, Kansas. With that, I thank you for your consideration and ask that you support the applicant's request.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. I'd just like to offer comments. Congratulations to all those involved. And Catherine Carter, I want to, you know, single out the efforts you made on this. The, the revenues to be generated from this are really just the pilot alone, but also the ultimate tax revenues, property tax revenues is significant. It's over 20 times more than currently generated. And I will say this as well, my daughters lived in this building, and it has to go. There is very little redeeming qualities of this building. So I want to say congratulations to all the developers and to our staff for bringing this deal forward. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Catherine. This project I completely 100% support. It's an amazing project. It, it, it fits the mass, it fits the master plan. What's, what's supposed to go there is what it is. At this, the master plan calls for higher density in this area along the Rainbow Corridor. And this project satisfies that. So I'm very happy. And I, and I want to thank Mr. Baronbaum for working with the community, working for, working with RDA. As every developer who has met with me on a project in Rosedale, the very first question I always ask is, have you talked to RDA? They are the ones that I lean on for projects based on the neighborhood involvement that Rosedale has. And so you have done that with this project. I'm very excited, and I, I can't wait to see what, what it can do for our, the Rainbow Corridor.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to note on the record that I won't be voting on this item. I'll recuse myself as I am employed by BRR Architecture.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve. Commissioner Ramirez, District Three.
Roll call. And if I heard correctly, Commissioner Markley recused from voting on this? Okay.
Correct.
We do need a second.
Walters. Okay. We did have a second.
Commissioner Walters seconded, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. I did not hear. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Roll call.
Roll call, Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is eight to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. We're now standing committee agenda. Under the standing committee agenda, we have a resolution authorizing filing of an application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Act. This item is fast-tracked from Monday's Economic Development and Finance Standing Committee meeting. Commissioner Burrows, you chaired the standing committee meeting. Do you have any additional comments?
Mayor, this committee discussed this.
I don't think we can pick that up. Is your microphone on?
It is now, Mayor. Thank you. I apologize publicly. Commissioner Burrows, at large, District Two. Mayor, there was much discussion in the committee as to the need for this resolution by the end of the year to meet the requirements of, if I remember correctly, we refer to it as the WIFIA program. And the, there was much discussion in reference to just exactly what this resolution accomplishes by advancing it. So I would ask our administrator one more time for clarification as to just what the passage of this resolution allows us to do. Thank you, Commissioner. The resolution before you allows us to move forward. It authorizes to file the, or file our application for WIFIA funding.
And just for clarification, that does not put into place a formula in which we have been discussing, known as a stormwater or wastewater discussion.
This, this action does not move forward with a different form water rate fee. It does have us file our application. It does put us in a position that we are recognizing that we do need to have funding to be able to pay for those loans or the funding that we would be able to get back through the WIFIA program. But this, this action simply does authorize the filing of it and does not change the stormwater fee. Thank you.
Clarification, just real fast. It's the, this is a resolution for the state revolving funds loan, not the WIFIA loan. So just, just that clarification. This is state revolving funds.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. I think there was much confusion in the committee as to what the resolution really was about. And I think we needed to take the time this evening to have that discussion. And if there's any other questions, I'll do my very best to answer them. But Mr. Mayor, the committee passed it out on a unanimous vote to get it before the commission here this evening.
So once again, this is simply approving us to apply, file an application with the KDHE revolving loan fund, correct?
Correct.
Right. Any questions or comments from the commission?
And, and Mayor, if I may, Commissioner Burrows, again, my understanding is there's grant opportunities with this funding, and it may allow us to have some forgiveness in this, if I'm, if I remember correctly. And if that's not correct, please correct me.
No, that is correct. And if you would like a short presentation, we do have one available that addresses some of those questions that were brought up during the standing committee and goes into further detail on some of those items, such as the rate, the interest savings, and the payment schedule.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I entertain a motion.
I believe, don't they have a presentation to give us on this?
Only if we request it. It seems that it passed out of standing committee. This is simply a request. If the commission would like a presentation, we could do the presentation.
This is Commissioner Philbrook, and yeah, I, I would like to see something, since I haven't seen any of it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I will only make one comment before Sarah Schaefer gets started. Throughout the public engagement for stormwater, we've repeatedly heard folks ask us to pursue federal funding everywhere we can. We've done that. We're going to continue to do that. But Sarah Schaefer, along with other members of the team, have put the UG in a really good position to take advantage of a really big program to help us advance stormwater. So I'm going to hand it over to Sarah. She's got a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for the introduction. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission, for the opportunity to discuss this briefly but as concisely as possible. Do I not know how to work it? I see a green button.
Could I ask for some clarification first? So this does not involve WIFIA, or it does involve WIFIA?
This is the matching funds for WIFIA. So this resolution would be our, basically our budgetary authority to demonstrate to our WIFIA application that we have the funds available to meet those, that, that criteria of 51% matching.
Okay. Because I thought I just.
I have no problems just saying, next slide, if you would like.
Okay. Because I thought you had said that this did not involve WIFIA.
This resolution does not involve WIFIA, but the state revolving funds is included in the WIFIA program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so for the agenda, we'll go quickly through the community-based stormwater program, the financial positioning that this particular loan gives us, the projects included in the state revolving fund application, and the resolution authorizing, the request for the resolution, authorizing the application with the intent to close. So our community-based partnership stormwater program is a $130 million program with approximately 18 projects that focuses on the repairs, replacements, and rehabilitations of our critical infrastructure relating to our sewers, stormwater, sanitary, and our CSOs. Additionally, curb and gutter repairs are also included in there as they are a part of our stormwater system. The consent decree with the EPA is what currently covers our CSO and our opportunities through that. This program accelerates some of those CSO projects and programs to address what we know needs to happen in some of these critical basins. So 51% matching obligation is required to our 49% WIFIA loan opportunity. And what that is, is our SRF loan is our matching obligation. Our repayment funds are sewer, wastewater, and stormwater rates, and our 3/8 sales tax for our road. Additionally, these programs do allow us to start to stack opportunities. So we're looking into additional grant funding, additional opportunities for moving these projects forward with alternative funding. The SRF loan is a lower rate locked in for future financing, which is different than our traditional opportunities. It's eligible for forgiveness programs. Currently, we have $1 million in forgiveness as an option as part of our pre-application notice. So geo-bonds is what we typically go after with our CMIP. We're unable to lock in rates for future financing, and they are not eligible We're unable to lock in rates for future financing and they are not eligible for our forgiveness programs. So in short, our SRF versus our geo-bonds model to savings of approximately $40 million over 20 years in interest, um, with conservative rates of 1.5% for our SRF loans versus a 3.5% for our geo-bonds. So rates and terms, um, over the last, um, year, you can see that we are in a historical low for our, um, interest index. Uh, so while interest rates are a historical low and there's no prepayment penalties, what we're able to understand for our rates, um, as Kathleen, um, was able to poll on 12-1 is our, uh, SRF is at a 1.3% and our WIFIA is at a 1.8%. And again, those are fixed over the term of our opportunity. Part of the standing committee, it was requested that we come back and we show what these particular debt obligations look like over time. So during our construction phase, we will be, um, focusing on our SRF opportunity as well as the WIFIA loan opportunity. So with SRF, it does require us to start payments on that interest immediately, or I shouldn't say immediately, within two years of taking out funds. So that's why you see the, the two years where we start construction and then we do start a graduated payment, um, until we are construction complete. The WIFIA program allows us a five-year grace period, up to five-year grace period, which we are showing here in terms of our repayment structure. And then it goes into the repayment, um, of our WIFIA and our SRF combined. The projects included in the SRF application have a total matching obligation of $70,740,790. That includes those nine major projects that you see. There is a combination of stormwater and wastewater slash combined sewer overflow projects that are listed. The SRF application, we filed the pre-application in January of 2021 to ensure that we have the ability to be very, um, competitive with our WIFIA opportunity. Um, our WIFIA application is due January 15th of 2022. So this SRF loan, um, author, uh, resolution would be our budgetary authorization, like I mentioned, showing that we have the funding available to meet our criteria for the WIFIA application. So what we're requesting today is a resolution authorizing the application of the state revolving funds for up to $70,740,790 for the community-based stormwater program with our WIFIA projects. Any questions or comments that you may have at this time?
Commissioner McCarronan.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate, let me get my, uh, my things. There we go. If my computer unmuted, it would cause tremendous delay and echo in here. And so I will not unmute it and save you all from that. Thank you, Mayor. I, I do appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak to my fellow commissioners. I fully support this SRF application. I thank Public Works for continued hard, and I believe very necessary work on all of this. I will move to approve this application as submitted. But although the item is before us right now is the SRF loan resolution, this item is intimately linked, at least as I see it, with the stormwater plan that comes later in our agenda. And that link between these two forms the basis for this comment. I'm going to take a moment to discuss the stormwater plan and suggest the motion that I feel is best for that item when it comes forward for a vote. Now you may remember that in a special session two weeks ago, I made a presentation about our proposed stormwater plan. In doing so, I hit the proverbial hornet's nest with a baseball bat. As the saying goes, sorry, not sorry. Following my presentation, it was suggested by several people outside of the unified government that I quote, "damaged the integrity of the stormwater plan process" by pointing out what I believe is an intolerable inequity in the tiered plan and by suggesting that there are other approaches that might be more equitable and still help us achieve our goals. I do not regret pointing out what I believe is an inequitable system. I do not regret suggesting that we, as a unified government, can do better. I do not regret proposing an alternative to the tiered plan. What I do regret very deeply is not being more vocal and more forceful in presenting my viewpoint to the entire commission much earlier in this year. You see, I don't believe that I damaged the integrity of the process because I do not believe there has been a broad public process regarding the stormwater plan since January 9th of 2020. That was the last day that this commission discussed the plan as it stood at that moment. I have reread the minutes of that meeting. And during that meeting, many of us said that we need to have more public engagement before we settle on our final plan. Unfortunately, COVID ensured that we did not have any more public engagement in 2020. Now, the five-tiered plan that we're going to hear about in the stormwater item that's been presented to us this year, it's different than the plan that we discussed in January of 2020. And I would argue that if we wanted to have more public engagement about the plan in January 2020, then we definitely want to have more public engagement about a new plan. By virtue of the differences in the new plan, I personally believe that I and my fellow commissioners have a responsibility to restart the public process and vet a new plan before voting. But I'm only one of 10 and we will make a collective decision. I did not actually intend that we would vote on my stormwater proposal tonight because it is just that, a proposal. It has not been discussed or analyzed or vetted or picked apart or argued over. Until I saw the framework in the agenda packet for this meeting, I'd never seen it formalized by Black &amp; Veatch. Frankly, when I look at what is presented in the agenda packet, even I have questions. In my opinion, we should not vote on my proposal or any other proposal until we've had a much more robust public engagement process, regardless of what plan we are proposing. And until we've come to a collective decision on the best path forward, understanding that any decision we make will have both pros and cons, friends and foes. If we, as a commission, do decide later in this meeting to take a vote on stormwater, I believe it should only be the original plan that has come before us. Yes or no regarding the five-tiered plan? All of that said, Mayor, I, with your permission, I propose a two-part motion. That's one for now and one for later. For this item, I move that we proceed with submission of the SRF application at this time based on the premise that we will ultimately settle on a plan that provides the needed revenue. For the stormwater item that's coming up, I will propose at this time and will move at that time that we table action on the stormwater plan until such time as a public process has been completed to build consensus for a new plan. If the commission decides that we cannot table action on the stormwater plan, the five-tiered plan that was proposed to us, then I respectfully make a preliminary motion that the item be yes, no on the five-tiered plan and that my proposal not be considered nor presented for a vote at that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is my statement and my motion for this item.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, uh, a resolution authorizing filing of application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Philbrook, second.
The motion is a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters. Philbrook.
Yes.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
No.
Townsend.
Commissioner Townsend. We lost Commissioner Townsend.
Maybe my microphone was, was not on. I voted aye on the last motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
My apologies. I did make that statement. The vote was seven to two. That motion carried.
Thank you. We now move to the administrator's agenda. We have eight items. So let's work with items one through four and items six through eight first, since they all pertain to labor agreements. And that will leave item number five as the last, uh, action item for the evening. Uh, Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Bach, County Administrator. As noted, we have had, continue to have great success with our labor unions and advancing contracts, uh, forward for coming time periods for 2022 through 2024. Tonight, with the blue sheets that have been added, we have six different labor agreements that are before you for approval. Uh, one, one is in a two-part fashion. And above all, this will make a total of 10 of our labor agreements that will be ready for approval. All of these union groups have gone through and ratified and signed off on the agreements that are in your said pack, or in your packets this evening. Item number one on the list is for our local plumbers union, um, for the years 2021 through 2024. It is in line with their direction given by the governing body, accordance for this, uh, or financial incentives for this group, and I would recommend approval.
Johnson move for approval.
McCarronan, second.
The motion is second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thanks. I'll entertain a motion for item number two and MOU with AFSCME for 2020 to 2021.
Johnson move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters. Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for item number three, MOU with, uh, AFCME for 2022 through 2024.
Johnson move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
All right. Now we go to item four, MOU with Painters District Council Number Three, International Brotherhood of Painters and Allied Trades.
Johnson move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Now move to, where are we? On number six? Yes, uh, MOU with Construction and General Labor's Local 1290.
Johnson move for, move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters. Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Now motion for item number seven, MOU with United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America, Mid-America Carpenter's Regional Council.
Johnson move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. We now go to, uh, item number eight, MOU with Service Employees International Union Local Number One.
Johnson move for approval. That's submitted.
McCarronan, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCarronan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That completes our labor agreements. We'll move to item number five on the administrator's agenda. Uh, it's a presentation on two options for stormwater potential rate structures, but I will, uh, defer to Commissioner McCarron again.
Mayor, I would, and, and Mr. Fisher, I would just ask, as I did before, that we only present the tiered option and that my proposal be withdrawn from consideration.
Well, to be clear, you had asked that we table this motion. I would, uh, table decision on a rate structure to a later date.
And, and that ultimately would be a motion that I would, uh, propose. However, I do believe that Mr. Fisher should be given the opportunity to make his presentation to remind us of where we've been, where we've come from, where we are now, and show us a potential path for moving forward from here.
Very good. Mr. Fisher.
I will, uh, work hard and attempt to do that. Uh, modifies our presentation quite a bit.
Mr. Mr. I'm sorry, I'd like to just comment.
Yeah, if I may, and I understand Commissioner McCarronan's request not to consider his option for consideration tonight. However, in light of the fact, if we are thinking about additional public meetings and hearings, this is a time where we have members of our public. I don't know, this is a time for us to express and demonstrate to people how different programs work. Thus, I, I would like the opportunity for Mr. Fisher and his team to present how everything works. You don't have to consider it, but at least that that consideration be made so we're for, we're able to further clarify how different programs work. And that's really part of how the public process can work.
I am completely o- open to that. I, I will say however, that, uh, what I put forward was a proposal that I, at, as, in looking at it in the agenda packet, even I have questions about it. And therefore I would ask that after we've looked at the framework for it, uh, if it's appropriate for me to do so, I'll make a motion that we not consider that particular plan. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, we'll cover that ground as you suggested and, and, uh, and go from there. Um, I guess it's worth noting that, uh, the UG started public engagement and at this time in 2018. Uh, so we are going into our fourth year of discussions about stormwater. We went through a solid year and a half. It is. I'll just speak closer to it. All right. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I was just reminding us that we are now into our fourth year of discussions about stormwater. Um, we did start off with the individually calculated. That was the original proposal. We went through, we are now into our 70-plus iterations of stormwater modeling. Uh, the tiered structure did come out early in 2020. Uh, and you might recall that staff worked with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce through a new infrastructure committee that they created on a tiered system. In a tiered system as proposed, the tiers are primarily affecting businesses. So I feel like, uh, there was public engagement post-January of 2020 and quite a bit of it. In fact, uh, earlier in this year in the spring, we proposed the tiered structure to the Chamber of Commerce in their open meeting and there was unanimous support for that. Uh, so we're going to cover both those options and, uh, if we'll go to slide two real quick. Not moving. Please, thank you. So, the prudent thing to do, an absence of action on a more long-term permanent structure was the commission adopted, we go to slide two. Thank you. Was a few months ago, the commission adopted a twenty-two, a 2022 rate structure that made the difference between residential and non-residential. It was a prudent thing to do because the fund was becoming insolvent. So that buys us some time, it would become insolvent in 2024 again, if we don't take action. So, so, we're okay for a minute, right, but now if no further action takes place, we know folks are going to continue to suffer from flooding. We have hundreds of flooding issues out there, recorded. The roads are going to continue to deteriorate, even if the commission and CAO and staff finds a way to increase investment in streets to twenty-plus million, without a strong stormwater program, it's not going to be as effective. We will miss out on opportunities for federal funding. Unless we commit to a more sustainable rate structure, we will have to scale down the WIFIA program substantially. And then, as you've seen in exhibits before, probably half a dozen times, projections for the stormwater system in ten years are that the majority of it will be failing. So, in response, as I mentioned, this spring, staff proposed this rate structure. It was anticipated or proposed to start January one of 2022, as you know, that did not happen. So the numbers changed, because this would not start until July of 2023. A lot of things changed in that period. This is the exact same structure that the Chamber of Commerce unanimously supported in the spring. Again, the numbers have changed, because it doesn't start for another year and a half. We're not generating those revenues over that year and a half that we were proposing in the spring. So I'm going to ask Anna White with Black and Beach, who's our expert in this arena, who's been with us for the three years, to cover option one, the alternative option, the individually calculated, and how they compare, and then we'll be happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you, good evening. All right, so as Jeff mentioned, we have two options that we're bringing forward tonight for consideration. And these are the same options in terms of the type of rate structure that we were looking at pre-COVID in January of 2020, when we had the same discussion. So the rate structures are the same, as Jeff was mentioning, the rates themselves have changed because a lot has changed in terms of the costs that need to be recovered for the stormwater system over the last almost two years. So option one, again, is the tiered rate structure. So under this option, residential customers would all pay the exact same fee. So July one of 2023, seven dollars and fifty cents for every residential parcel. The non-residential then would pay according to the tiers, and where their amount of impervious area falls. As Jeff mentioned, these rates go in July one of 2023, we're proposing that the same rates stay in effect until January of 2025, so for eighteen months, it would be the same rate schedule, then in 2025, there would be an increase. I do want to point out that the rate schedule shown here will generate revenue that will recover a hundred percent of the costs that have identified that need to be refunded from the stormwater fee. Okay, option two then is the individually calculated option. So, under this type of a rate structure, there's typically a fixed charge, or a base charge as we're calling it here, and then a charge based on the amount of impervious area. So each parcel pays an individual fee based on its actual impervious area. So, the monthly base charge is an amount that every single parcel will pay. And then in addition to that base charge, a fee based on each unit of five hundred square feet of impervious area, so for example, if we look at January one, 2024, every parcel would pay four dollars and eight cents, and then if a parcel had one thousand square feet of impervious area, they would pay another I can't see the rates up there. I do have them here in my slide, for some reason, they're not quite showing up up there. So the rate per five hundred square feet in 2024 is eighty cents. So if a parcel has a thousand square feet, that'd be another dollar and sixty cents added to the four dollars and eight cents. The rate in 2025 would be eighty-five cents, and 2026 would be ninety-one cents. So going from eighty to eighty-five to ninety-one cents. Okay. So these rates would start in January of 2024, so six months later than option one, and that's just because it takes more time to implement this kind of a rate structure in the UG system. So we are proposing then annual increases in twenty-five and twenty-six. So the rates that we're showing here will not generate a hundred percent of the costs, revenue to fund a hundred percent of the costs that need to be recovered, there is a funding gap with the rates that are shown here. It is intended that the UG will find other sources for that funding gap. Some examples that Sarah had already mentioned previously in her presentation, loan forgiveness opportunities, grant opportunities, other federal funding options that are out there that can help close that gap. Okay, so the last slide here just compares, again, these two options. So, again, looking, you know, on the left, option one, the tiered rates, residential parcels would all pay one fee, non-residential would pay based on the tiers. Option two, individually calculated, every parcel pays the same rate schedule. It just depends on their amount of impervious area. So both of these rate options will support the WIFIA SRF program that Sarah talked about, they'll also both, which the existing rates will not support. And it will also provide for more equitable cost recovery for your residents that again, your existing rate structure does not provide for.
In conclusion, we were thinking about today, and three years of this, the UG has not done one single capital project, because there has been no funding. We've replaced a box culvert, a wing wall, done some repairs to road to get it open and safe, but they're temporary. Not one single capital project, we're not doing any ditching to speak of. Not, we're doing very little maintenance. That's going to continue, and actually, it's going to get worse. We're going to continue to lose roads, because pipes fail. I don't know what else to do, this is and we have a WIFIA program staring us in the face, it's a great opportunity, not every community gets its shot at that. I believe the tiered structure, based on the year and a half of public input, the three years of engagement at some level or another, including the business community, is an amenable plan, it is equitable, is lighter, is more equitable than we've got right now, or that we'll have in twenty-two even. We can do more public engagement. I'm not sure we'll get a different outcome. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Commissioner McCurnan?
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Jeff, thank you Anna. When I went back and looked at the minutes from our January 2020 meeting, I pretty much said what I've said again tonight. I've had these same concerns from the very beginning, I've said them in every meeting. I think that a tiered plan is inequitable around the breakpoints. If, when I go to the store, the amount of sales tax I pay is dependent on the value of the goods I purchase, because the tax rate is constant across all levels of purchase. When we send out our property tax bills, the amount of property tax that a given property pays is proportional to the value of that property, because there's a single rate across all values, and I, I'll tell you, I'm not a very smart man, but I, it just seems intuitive to me that this would function the same way. If impervious area is the determinant of runoff, stress on our system, it would seem to me that we would want to try to have a constant rate across all sizes. Apply that rate, bigger parcels pay more money, a smaller, bigger impervious areas pay more, smaller impervious areas pay less. If that is not possible for us to do, if the only thing that we can do is a tiered option, then that's fine, and I accept that, and if my fellow commissioners say that that's the way we're going to go, so be it. But I've been pretty consistent about this from the very beginning. I understand, and I've said this before too, I completely understand the bind we have put you in. We have handed you a city, and we have said to you, this city is broken, fix it, but you can't have any more money than you have now. I understand that intellectually, but I'm trying to look out for constituents who may get caught on the cusp of a break in our tiers, and that's my sole purpose in bringing all of this up. You are right, the individually calculated proposal that I gave to you and Anna does not recover enough money for us to pay our bills going forward, which is why I proposed that we supplement that with ARPA. As an allowable use, it made sense to me that we could take some of the burden of the individually calculated off of everybody across the spectrum from small to big, until we've had the program running for a few years. I completely understand, and I said this two weeks ago, that some people may not want to use ARPA for this purpose. That there are many things that our community needs as we craft our response to COVID. And this may not be the highest priority use for the rest of the commission. What I heard about the very initial proposal was, if option one, the individually calculated is, it makes sense, but it's too much money, too fast. That's what set me on the path of trying to find an individually calculated rate that lowered the amount that was needed to be paid. And then, of course, when I did that, I created a gap. And this year, when ARPA became available, I thought, well, maybe there's an opportunity to fill that gap. But, as I said earlier, even though I understand what you just put up on the screen, nobody else does. Nobody else has thought about this as much as I have, and I think it is completely unfair that I would propose to bring that individually calculated plan for a vote without any further discussion about it. And so, those are my comments on it. I still go back to where we were in 2020, bemoaning the fact that we felt as if there needed to be more public engagement, I understand we've done a lot. I get it, but anyway. Thank you for the opportunity to share some comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you Mayor. The slide that shows option one, if you could go back to that. So, this slide, at these rates, is there a time when this commission has been printed, been presented? These rates? Prior to tonight, am I missing something big?
No, it's a fair question, I do believe in the executive session a couple of weeks ago, it was in our slide deck, and the conversation, I missed it, I did not show you this.
So, I mean, that's, you know, I'm looking at it, I've tried really hard to understand this from day one. And I find myself at a point where I think I understand it. And then I realize there are pieces of it I simply don't understand, but I didn't think we had seen this ever before. And if I'm understanding what's in front of us tonight, we're being requested to vote on this and approve it. I mean, that's staff's recommendation, is that correct?
It's the exact same structure as you did see in the spring.
Correct.
The numbers are increased.
Same structure, different rates, is what I heard, I'm going to say.
Yeah, exactly, again, they've been updated because we didn't take any action on it.
Right, I do appreciate that, so they've been updated. Lack of action has backed us up, if you will.
Right.
So, costs are higher. Can you tell us again, in your ideal world of fixing these problems with us, the annual revenue, that original figure that we wanted, and then as we worked through this, we dropped it down? Can you tell us the annual revenue we seek?
Well, it's been a while, but you might remember when we first kicked this off, the eight basins, and we have around fifty basins, but just the eight basins was somewhere around a hundred and sixty million dollars of needs. And I believe the plan that has been proposed.
Jeff, I have a recall of somewhere along the line, a plan that was going to generate, we dropped it to like the thirty-six million dollar range, but was that an annual?
No. No, it was thirty to forty million, you're exactly right.
Thirty to forty million, over how much time?
In needs, and then in that, in that plan, in the spring of 2020, that was, we were showing you a seven-year plan, if you remember. And that thirty-six or forty million spread out, those were needs that would be addressed in that seven-year plan.
So, can you remind us again, at our current rate, what we're bringing in annual?
Oh, right now, yeah, three and a half million dollars a year, and we need to hit around ten million in the next three years.
Okay, okay, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around all this. So, did I understand in an earlier slide and presentation, we have a we have a WIFIA deadline looming in January, is that what I saw earlier?
Yes.
And part of what WIFIA requires, I guess, is that we demonstrate that we can pay the loan. Like, if I'm going to go buy a car, they want to know if I can pay for it.
Sure.
And so, does the Kansas Revolving Loan Fund help us with that?
It does, it provides our local match.
Okay.
At a lower rate than we would issue through GO Box.
Does it take, does that take the heat off the urgency for this option one screen with rates we haven't seen before?
No, there needs to be that financial support for those loans before we get to closing, which is this. What we currently have in 2022 will not. If we didn't adopt this rate structure, we would be looking over the next uh, we would be looking over the next month to scale down that WIFIA to this much. Wouldn't do Argentine or, or, uh, Jersey Creek or we're, we're just doing small things. It'd be a real big lost opportunity.
I'm gonna yield the floor. Thanks.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes, thank you. I believe we have been at this a long time.
Is your micro, Fisher, is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. I'll repeat. Um, we have been at this a long time. And, um, and s- some significant things have happened in the two years since this plan was sort of proposed in January of 2020. Uh, some of those things that have happened is, are ARPA, which is fund, federal funding targeted partially at infrastructure. And the infrastructure plan and funding that the feds are distributing to the states. And because this plan was sort of made two years ago, it doesn't include any of that in there. This plan was based on a big scope of work. That scope of work has sort of, um, uh, stayed static. And, and we've been talking about how to fund a way to pay for that big scope of work, ignoring the opportunities of ARPA or infrastructure planning, our infrastructure funding. So I think, uh, I, I agree that we probably need to restructure our stormwater fees. I agree, we need to address stormwater projects. Uh, the timing of this consideration is probably not the best because there are so many unanswered questions about how much of the 160 million we can get from other sources. And therefore, adjusting or, uh, being able to take some of the burden off, uh, local taxpayers. Um, I, you know, we, we heard some things, uh, Monday night that I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a little bit differently, but uh, it's my understanding that if we apply for this loan and then for some reason we don't need the money or all of the money, we don't have to accept that loan. Uh, and we don't know how quickly that information will be available to us. But I hope we don't hear, or you don't hear a few months from now that, well, we applied for the loan, we're committed to taking it, we have to take it. Yeah. If we don't take it, we'll never get another loan, or some, some explanation that, uh, contradicts what we were told Monday night. Um, on the other, on the other topic that was just raised about, we're not doing enough uh, for stormwater, I agree with that. How many tens of millions of dollars of ARPA funding do we have sitting in the bank right now that we could be using to do this? That's really on us, I think, as a commission. Uh, the total was 87 million dollars over two years. We've committed a, a small portion of that to what we called immediate needs. The rest of it's just sitting in the bank. We, if we are truly at a crisis, we could be spending that money right now. Um, so, again, that money is not considered in any of these calculations. So I think there are a lot of moving parts. I think it needs a bit more fine tuning than we can accomplish here tonight. And, uh, I support Brian's consideration that we, um, delay consideration of this, uh, resolution. Thanks.
If I might speak to those points, because I thought he raised some good points and I want to make sure we're all clear. The tiered system from early 2020 did not anticipate infrastructure money. That is true. This one completely has been modified to support WIFIA. Now, if infrastructure bill opportunities come about and we are, have any success in them, the ordinance is written such that even though you adopt the three-year structure, every year we can review that. And if we're outperforming and the commission wishes to adjust, they can. So I would suggest we adopt this that supports WIFIA. Each year during the budget process, we can review where we're at on things. And the commission can elect to adjust each year if they wish. But with, by adopting a three-year plan, what it does, at least gives the business community and the residents predictability. It's a good practice. Thank you.
Commissioner Markley?
I have my hand raised on behalf of Commissioner Philbrook.
Thank you, Commissioner Markley. So, I, so we keep, for some reason, backing off of what the total issue is. We keep going through the, the, what we've pared it down to. We pared it down to dealing with how many projects?
Uh, we have nine projects.
Okay. And how many projects do we really need to take care of?
A lot more than that.
Now, give me some numbers, because you were talking about.
I, I don't, it's 100, 100, it's 160 million dollars worth of needs in eight basins.
And we're only looking at dealing with how much right now?
30, 40 million.
Okay. So, it's like saying I want to buy one tire for the car, one new tire, you know? How are the rest of the tires gonna do? Well, you know, the rest of the stuff is still gonna keep getting worse. And if we just keep looking at it as we're gonna try to Band-Aid a few things, then what happens? We keep going down the tubes. It, don't get me wrong. I really think we need to take care of those things. But when we keep looking at this as, oh, this is all we have to do, is this. But it's not. The picture is so much bigger and so much over, more overwhelming that, you know, I don't see how we could actually really have too much money to deal with stormwater. Somebody explain that one to me. I don't see how we could ever get too much money to deal, you know, with all the problems we've been putting off for all these years. So, um, I want to move to approve the changes to the chapter 30 that will enable the adoption of a tiered stormwater utility fee as presented. Number one.
Markley, second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ramirez?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as everyone here knows, I was the new kid on the block. When I came in, this was first big thing that we started talking about was stormwater. Um, two years later, we're still talking about this. I'm still not comfortable and still not having a true handle of what we're doing and trying to do, or accomplishing to do. Um, I, I personally feel, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner, uh, McKernan. Uh, but on my side of it, I, I, I could vote no on it, of course. But I don't want to because I know it's what's needed. But I feel like I'm, well, first, before I make the statement I'm about to make, how is WIFIA and the stormwater fee connected?
The rates generate a certain level of revenues that support the funding and the debt service for SRF and the WIFIA program.
You gotta pay back the loan.
You have to speak up.
So the, the, the fee that we're going to propose it raises the revenue to pay back the SRF loan that we're taking out, which is part, which is the matching obligation to the WIFIA loan. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're on it, Ian.
Sorry about that. Um, I, I feel, again, this has happened recently. I feel we are being boxed in. Uh, I feel like we're not having a choice. It's, we're saying we have this opportunity with you, but you have to go with this plan. And I, I not until recently, and I'm, and then it's spreading like wildfire of constituents reaching out to me on this issue. I received a letter from a woman asking, why are we? She put it in saying, you are taxing and feeing people out of this community. I understand we need stormwater. But if we're gonna raise rates to this degree, where can we lower fees in another area to help offset this increase? Because people are still grappling with COVID and the economic impact it did to their families. And, and, and everything we do is a careful balance. And that's, that, that's, that's the puzzle of what we do here is trying to find that balance. Well, I can't vote yes on this tonight because I'm still trying to understand, trying to figure out the best way for it. And people need some relief. And I understand this is, we need it. It's completely necessary for our community to thrive, to bring in more economic development, to bring in more people to move. But I, I, again, gonna use the same wording as before, I just cannot in good faith vote on this yet. Cause I'm just, I feel like I don't have a way out of the choice other than what's being given.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. This one is for me. Um, I think that, um, I'm on the record as saying, I think we need to get something done sooner rather than later. I think we have had a significant amount of public engagement on the tiered proposal in particular, and in particular with the business community, which will be more impacted under the tiered model than our resident community. Um, I think we've had a significant amount of engagement over the past couple of years. And what I hope we're gonna come out of tonight with is a feel for, can that tiered system pass in this commission? And if it can't, then we know we're back to the drawing board. And I think if we leave tonight without a vote, one way or the other, we're just kicking the can down the road. So I, I support and have seconded the motion to vote on that tiered proposal, which I think we've had plenty of engagement upon. I think commissioners know where they stand on, on that proposal. Um, and I think we just need to see where everybody shakes out.
Mayor Ali, if I may, Commissioner Burrows had a question.
Sure.
Is that an acknowledgement, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Oh, thank, thank you. The, um, I, I appreciate the comments that commissioners made here this evening because we realize the, the revenue burden on our citizens is, is at the breaking point. It's been at the breaking point for a while. I don't know about you, I just received my tax statement earlier this month. I think it was maybe a little late. But here we are having a discussion. And I have a couple of questions to kind of get at maybe what we're talking about. When we, when the resolution came forward in committee, I anticipated we would be having this discussion. And I anticipated an alternative method coming up. And my, my colleague, I wanted to make sure that he had a fair and opportunity, chance to present this to the entire commission. And there's actions that could have been taken to stop that. That's not how I believe we should operate with one another. We should allow that debate and discussion to move forward. But I do have a question. We just passed a 48 million dollar IRB tonight for a facility that is going to have units that are rated at $66,000 per unit, which will add up to a little over $15 million. But we're bonding 48 million for that project. Can you tell me, Jeff, what that place will pay in stormwater rate?
I cannot. I don't know how much impervious surface is on that, on that site.
We, there was been discussion about, um, remediation on property, if we tell them to put in grassy areas and things like that, that we would lower fees. I think that was part of the discussion that we would reward those that have invested in those types of infrastructure, uh, purposes to help us address with the runoff of stormwater. Is that still in this plan, in the proposal?
In the individually calculated, it would be yes.
Okay, so we, we are, we are bonding developments that we are helping pay for them to do that. And then we're still going to assess the public and ask them to help pay for that. Can you tell me who will be overseeing the program for the next 10 years?
The engineering division of Public Works.
And what else, is there an outside contractor that we'll be contracting with to ensure that things are moving forward or anything along those lines?
Black and Beach is our, uh, partner that will help us with implementation.
Do we have a cost of what that contract will be?
I don't.
Okay. So when we talk about not having a sustainable fee fund, I, I, I have a lot of questions and I wanted to ensure that the fact that we just passed the water resolution earlier, I believe we just bonded another 70 million or borrowed another 70 million. So if my arithmetic is a little quick tonight, I'm looking at 128 million that we've put out tonight to borrow. And we don't have a source in which to pay back except for a pilot that is assessed onto a development project. And an 8% that goes to local school districts. So what I'm trying to get at here, committee, is there's a lot of questions in reference to what the needs are in our community. And it's the fair and equitable part that we, as commissioners, are charged with doing. And I want nothing more to see infrastructure investment in our community, but what I don't want to see is broken promises and broken commitments and a scaled down projects just to get the numbers to work. I would submit that if we're going to do this project, that we have accurate numbers, we have accurate figures, we have the partners at the table that can give us those numbers. And then we educate the public about why we need to do it instead of just taking different shots and different approaches to finding a funding mechanism. So I'm gonna support the, the motion to table, I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we table this conversation. We've already bonded 70 million through the resolution. We've, we allowed ourselves to take that 70 million. It was brought up by Commissioner Walters that there's money available within our budget process to start some major projects if we need to get on it. We have some time in which to educate ourselves more thoroughly about this issue. And we're an intelligent group of people collectively together than what I would think we are separately. And I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and do whatever's necessary to ensure we get a fair, equitable, transparent plan out before the public so that we can make a movement forward that hasn't been made over the last 20 years. We are the last city in the state to do this. And it is long overdue. Something needs to be done. But we don't need to take a willy-nilly shot at the dark and throw darts at a dartboard and hope we get lucky. And so I want to make a substitute motion that we table this subject until we have better information. I can make a date certain if we need to. And that's, that's a procedure that is available to us. I can make a date certain until the next, uh, legis, not legislative, the next commission meeting. And then we can determine if we want to put a subcommittee together or what we want to do. But we already have the ability. We passed the resolution tonight for 70 million. We've got funds available that we can get started. And then we can come back and put a formula in place that does the, does this commission and the city the honorable thing. And that's to find a sustainable revenue plan without hurting our residents anymore than what we already have. So that's, that's my motion.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, first question for clarification was the motion brought forward by, um, Commissioner Markley.
Um, I seconded.
I'm sorry.
Philbrook.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Philbrook.
Hey.
Seconded by Markley. Um, you mentioned the tiered option. Is that the same, just for clarification, as option one that we're looking tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what is, there's been discussion about tabling a decision. What is, I think most, I would venture to say we do not want to we do not want to, we, the commission, do not want to see the opportunity to take advantage of the WIFIA money get past us. What is the drop dead date by which that is done? I mean, what is the date by which we have to announce a plan so that we can take advantage of the WIFIA money?
I think there are probably a couple of different dates you have to work with Commissioner. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to submit our WIFIA application for it by December sixteenth?
Well, um, the SRF drop dead would be December sixteenth. The WIFIA application deadline would be January fifteenth. That is, okay, that will be it.
So we have the approval to move forward with the SRS, State Revolving Loan, which we did tonight. And then we'd need to take action to approve the WIFIA one by, you said?
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth, okay.
Commissioner, uh, Townsend, anything else?
Yes, Mayor. Um, the other question I have for clarification, there'd been some numbers mentioned about what option one would fund. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fisher, that we're looking at about seventy million dollars worth of projects, seventy million dollars worth of projects that cover things like the Jersey Creek, Muncie, about eight or nine. Is that correct?
I'm gonna ask Sarah to speak.
Thank you.
So the, the, the stormwater rate, as it's being presented, would support the first nine projects in our stormwater program. Those nine stormwater projects are in the WIFIA package, um, which is what we're applying for the reduced loans, reduced, reduced rates loans for.
And, and about how much money is that, though? How much money in projects?
So we have a hundred and thirty million dollar program. Nine of those projects are sewer and CSO related. Nine of them are stormwater related, and they're approximately fifty percent each. Like, we try to be as, as equivalent as possible on, on some of those.
Okay, I, I'm still not clear. All right, so are we saying those projects total about a hundred and thirty million dollars or seventy million?
The total, the, so eighteen projects is a hundred and thirty million. We are required for fifty-one percent matching, which is what that seventy million is. So the seventy million is what we're requesting the state revolving funds for to meet our matching obligation of our fifty-one percent for the WIFIA program to loan us that forty-nine percent at that reduced rate. So, uh, cause we can't get a hundred percent SRF loan. But you partner the SRF loan with the WIFIA loan, we get to have those significantly reduced rates comparatively to our geo bonds, which is where that forty million dollars in potential interest savings comes from.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Uh, I think those were the only questions I have right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I'd just like to offer a few comments on this. Uh, you know, what we're dealing with here, obviously, this is an enterprise fund. And so an enterprise fund really, obviously, we're, we're just, um, funding a utility. This is a service that we are providing to the community. And an enterprise fund ought to be self-sustaining. It ought to be self-financing. It should not depend upon outside funds. We should not be taking money out of general revenues. Uh, it really requires that, uh, that it, it be self-funded. And that is, for us, taken care of by the fees that we assess for this. The, we have delayed for twenty years an adjustment to the stormwater fee, except for the one we did a couple of years ago. Four dollars and fifty cents a square, a, a parcel for God knows how many years, fifteen or more years, frankly, was irresponsible on our part. There should have been proposals brought forward and the commission action taken to make sure that we were funding our stormwater sufficiently to protect life and property of our residents. That's a primary responsibility. I had eight years on the Board of Public Utilities. When I first got on the Board of Public Utilities, we clearly needed to raise rates. But for years in it before that, the, the, the members of the board would not consider that because frankly, it was unpopular with the electorate. But when it finally got to it, we found that we were facing failure and inability to provide good infrastructure for our community. We were having transformers that were almost sixty years old. We were not even be able to buy parts to repair transformers. We were having more and more outages. We were not taking care of the vegetation that was growing up on the power lines. We had multiple failures with our water and still continue to have problems with water supply. If you don't take care of infrastructure, it fails and we can no longer provide the service to our people. And that's our fundamental responsibility. By delaying this for so long, we've simply put ourselves further and further behind. If I don't take care of the leak in my roof, it's going to cause damage to the rest of the house. I'm gonna have problems with mold. I'm gonna have problems with, with, uh, wood warping. That's going to happen. We have to take care of our infrastructure. And I'm sensing the frustration in Jeff's voice here that we have, we know what we need to do and we're trying to protect people from the increases that are required. And there's frankly, no way. I would love to say that the infrastructure money that's gonna be available coming from the federal government will be sufficient. That's, that's a crapshoot. We don't know that we'll get that money. If we do get that money, that's wonderful. We can use that to offset the costs that we're already proposing. But we've gotta get out there and start making these improvements now. That's our fundamental job, is to provide quality services to our community. If we don't do this, people will look around and say, if the, if the commission and the administration does not care enough to invest in its community, why would I bring in my investment? It's as simple as that. And so, and frankly, I'm a little frustrated and I agree with Commissioner, uh, McCarron. The tier structure, I would vote for it. Um, I do think that is, he's right about this, that per square foot, I ought to be assessed per square foot. That's how it ought to work. Instead of trying to distribute it among and, and, and create a tier structure, I think a per square foot is really the right way to go. It, it's, it's fair, it's clear. And, you know, we're gonna have to do this. And as soon as we do this, then we can keep moving forward. And we will adjust and people will incorporate these costs into what they're doing. But again, what they can't sustain is unreliability of infrastructure, and that's where we are. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. I, Jeff, I am so sorry to ask you to give this to me again because every time I think I understand it, I hear another little thing that makes me think, maybe I don't understand it. So we have a hundred and thirty million in needs, projects that we need to do. State revolving fund says we need to match fifty-one percent of the total. So we, so that's where Commissioner Burrows is getting seventy million, if I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. So we would borrow half of the total need. Just stop me when I'm wrong. Uh, and WIFIA is what?
Okay, I'm gonna try to walk back through that. You were right earlier when you suggested, uh, you remembered thirty-six million in stormwater needs, right? You're right there. That's stormwater alone, okay? But WIFIA has been able to do, let us do, has leveraged multiple needs into a big package, which is the hundred and thirty million dollars.
Which is more than stormwater?
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of.
And then WIFIA requires a fifty-one percent local match, which SRF is going to provide for us.
So, so we have the match. Cause we're gonna go to the state revolving loan fund for it. We're gonna borrow it.
Yes.
And then WIFIA is going to do what for us?
There are the forty-nine percent, the other forty-nine percent of very low interest loans.
I am, and, and the stormwater fee at whatever rate, using whatever calculation method, is the repayment.
Correct.
For both of those loans we're gonna take out.
For that package, that rate structure has to support the debt service for that package. And then we've also proposed ditching program, the annual maintenance of things, uh, street sweeping, all those other things we've talked about before. That we're not doing now.
Correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, raising rates is not popular with the electorate. But they're the ones who put us here to be their voice. And right now, they feel they're being taxed and feed out of this county. So I, I understand we have needs, a crisis needs. But we could raise these fees, build all this infrastructure, and have people continue to move out. And what is that for? What have we done? And so it's, I, I understand that we have needs. But we have an electorate for a reason. We're here to be their voice, and at the moment, we're not listening to their voice. Thank you.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes, I would like to second Commissioner Burrows' substitute amendment, or substitute resolution.
So, Misty, we had a resolution already with a second on the floor. Do you need to proceed with that first?
Mayor, this is something that we don't see a great deal, but we do have a motion and a second on the floor. And then a substitute motion is allowed if it's not made to cause confusion and is not contrary to the original motion. I don't believe that Commissioner Burrows' motion was confusing, and it's not directly contrary to the original motion. A contrary motion would be voting to disprove Tier Two. So in this case, the substitute motion, that's now been moved and seconded, we would now vote on that, which was to table the discussion. Have I correctly stated your motion, Commissioner Burrows?
That's correct, Misty. Thank you.
Unless more debate is warranted.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, Commissioner Burrows, is your motion to disapprove the tier or to table the discussion?
My motion, my, I, it was a substitute motion to table this discussion until date certain. We've just, we, we did the resolution tonight, uh, for seventy million. We have until the middle of January for the, uh, WIFIA grant that we can submit. So I would, we have opportunities to have a commission meeting. I'm trying to find that sweet spot between Christmas and the holidays. But we do have a, a meeting December sixteenth. And I believe that would be a good time for us to possibly put together another committee. So my motion would be till December sixteenth, and then we can take it up again. So that makes it date certain. If you want an infinite table, then it would be up to the mayor or somebody else to ask that it be untabled to, to raise the issue forward. Uh, but I don't think in all fairness to everyone here, if we have a set date, it may force us to get busy and learn what the, some of these formulas are doing. And, um, and it gives us an opportunity to advance the proposal that was already put forward tonight, the resolution, and have more intimate discussion with one another in reference to quite possibly racing the confusion and the next step will go with a sustainable plan. There's been much confusion here this evening, and I believe everyone in this room wants to do the right thing. And when we collectively come together, we can do the right thing. So that's why I made the substitute motion, but it is date certain. And I'll just move it till the next, uh, next, next meeting, next commission meeting. If it's not December sixteenth, I might just say next commission meeting, cause that meeting could change for whatever reason. We don't know, but I'll just say till the next commission meeting.
Commissioner Walters, is that your understanding for your second? Well, Mayor, you have a motion and a second on the substitute motion. Unless there, are there any other hands raised?
Yes.
It may be appropriate to vote on the substitute motion at this time?
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just for clarification, on the substitute motion, I would ask my colleague, Commissioner Burrows, just for my clarity, what we expect to have happen between now and that date certain, which looks like December sixteenth? What would be the benefit of this time between now and the sixteenth if we do not vote on one of these two options tonight?
And, and that's a fair question, and, and thank you for that question. It's not my intent to put more work on staff or anything like that. There's been much confusion this evening. I mean, many of us struggle to go through the plans that have been presented. This actually, taking the resolution and moving it forward, that Commissioner McCarron and in this budget subcommittee that I sat on worked to get here to the full commission, it was the opportunity to help provide some education as to the monies that are coming in. But we've already committed ourselves to seventy million. And I, I don't wanna continue to repeat myself, but the hundred and thirty million dollars, it's not a sustainable fund with what we see here. We raised fees this last budget cycle, and we're looking at raising fees again. So between now and the next meeting, I don't know that anything can be done except for the fact that we qualified for the, we, we've approved the resolution, and we have a little bit more time with the WIFIA program. And between that and getting the WIFIA program submitted, we may have an opportunity to discuss alternate plans that, like Mr. McCarron brought forward. Or we may be able to sit down collectively and, and work through more solid numbers. It's the speculation of uncertainty that has me greatly concerned. And Mayor made a comment that we have failed. We haven't failed it because we haven't tried. And what I mean by that is, we are the elected body that's going to make the decision. I don't want the next twenty years to be reflective on us that we missed a great opportunity. And slowing it down a couple of weeks is not going to kill this opportunity. So if you have additional questions, I would state that staff's available, administrator's available, other commissioners are available. Do some research with what it takes to operate within the WIFIA program. Look at the dissent decree and, and get that information necessary to get you more comfortable. But, and I don't mean you specifically, Commissioner, but just so the public has a better understanding of what it is we're trying to do. We need to be prudent in how we move forward with this. And that's my, that's my reason of making a substitute motion to table this, because I believe there's an opportunity here. There was mention about federal funding. We don't know what federal funding's coming down and how much. Rumor has it, it may be eight billion, eighteen billion to the state of Kansas. That would leave a large pot of money for us to, in which to look at. But we'll know more throughout this next two or three weeks. So the, the, being blue-sheeted and put the pressure to put this out this evening, I think we've met part of that responsibility. And I commend those of you that voted for that to do that. But I believe tabling the rest of the discussion until we have accurate, clear information and a higher comfort level, then that's why I made the substitute motion.
Thank you for that. Uh, that, that helped clarify for me what the expectation would be for a continuance of this. I, I would say I was prepared to vote on something tonight. And to the public, I found it helpful to look at the information that was displayed tonight in, in a very, I think, easy to understand explanation we can find on the website. One thing I did like about option one was the certainty. So if there's some more certainty or more options we can look at between now and the date certain was worth a shot. But I hope we will not go beyond that. Because even though, as Commissioner Ramirez is saying, he's hearing about burdens Because even though, as Commissioner Ramirez is saying, he's hearing about burdens put on the electorate, the other side of that coin are complaints about what's not being done. Uh, because this issue has been delayed and delayed, not necessarily by this configuration, but, you know, the can has been kicked so far down the road that something has to be done now. So, thank you for that clarification. Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, my God. Uh, Jeff, I apologize, man, uh, for, you've, you've worked so hard, and, and you've been working, and, and I know that's your job and everything, but I, we're trying to do the best we can. I apologize for, for, for this, but I, I will say to this commission, I think I'm quoting Commissioner Townsend right, we need to fish or cut bait. Is that right?
Well, I probably said it one time, maybe not tonight, but that sounds like something that was.
The drop bid date is when? Yeah, I thought I heard January 15th. Jen?
Yes, sir.
We cannot make a decision after January 15th. We have to make a decision as, as a body before January 15th. Is that correct?
Yes, sooner is better. There's a lot of work that goes into this stuff, right?
That's correct.
Dump us on July 14th, that's gonna be tough, right?
So it needs to be well before the 15th. And we, so if we table this tonight, we, we still don't have a lot of time. And, and we, and we need to do whatever we need to do, but we, we've got a very short window, and we need to make this happen. We need to either fish or cut bait, uh, before, well before January 15th, so that staff will have enough time to, to exercise whatever, uh, actions need to be taken in order to get those WIFIA funds. So I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. So as I understand, we have a substitute motion with a second. Uh, we will have a roll call. Is Commissioner Philbrook, uh, available?
Mayor, she had to step out of the room for a moment. She did ask she would like to be able to vote.
Okay.
Mayor, it's Commissioner Bynum. Can I ask a technical question of staff? Because the January meeting dates are not yet loaded onto my calendar, so I don't know how many bites at the apple we have.
You would have one more in January, Commissioner. We have a meeting scheduled for January 6th. And the next one after that is January 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Or actually, it's not even January 20th, it's the end of the month, so.
So January 6th is when we gotta make a decision.
Either in two weeks per Commissioner's motion or January 6th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see that Commissioner Philbrook has returned. Roll call, please, on the substitute motion.
Roll call. Markley.
No.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
No.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is seven to two. That motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, that moves us now to our, I believe is our last item. Uh, the revised holiday schedule, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last special session we had, um, well, actually, was at the last full commission meeting we had, there was a discussion regarding the holiday calendar, which was adopted by the governing body. During that meeting, Commissioners asked that we come back and provide a report to the commission regarding the cost and other related expenses to adding an additional holiday, should we elect to do so. Um, so tonight, we have prepared that. I will recognize Assistant County Administrator Bridget Cobbins, who is going to present on this item. Ms. Cobbins?
Thank you, Doug. Bridget Cobbins, County Administrator's Office. Mayor and Commissioners, before you tonight is a resolution to consider revising the holiday schedule and to make modifications to Section 5.3 of the Human Resources Guide. At the full commission meeting on November the 18th, the 22, 2022 holiday schedule was approved. At that meeting, several questions arose regarding, um, adding the Juneteenth holiday to our schedules for 2022. The total cause for adding a holiday, what the state of Kansas' decision was to observe the holiday, and what neighboring municipalities were doing in honor or to observe that, um, holiday. Also, we did have a question in regards to the election day was brought up, um, to consider that also as a holiday for 2022. Currently, the unified government has a total of 11 holidays that we do observe. You can see them listed. The one that is showing is a Good Friday in our, um, packet. We are asking that we consider an amendment to the resolution to change the verbiage from Good Friday to Spring Holiday. That, um, decision had been made many years ago. We had just neglected to change that in our H R guide. In regards to Election Day, currently, the unified government is using the same, um, policies in which the state of Kansas. It's unusual. Staff is usually able to go in and to vote, depending upon their schedule, is that the discretion of the department head, if they need to go during working hours. Typically, public safety officers or public safety staff, those are the ones that usually require to have the two-hour, um, timeframe to go and vote during their, their work shift. It is rare that, um, staff has elected or has complained to our H R department, um, because they were not given the opportunity to, um, vote. Juneteenth was one of the discussions that was asked about us considering adding it to our, um, holiday schedule for 2022. Um, I just want to give a little overview of what Juneteenth is. I think a lot of people hear the words, but they're not quite sure what it is or how it even evolved. But on Freedom Eves, or on the eve of January the first, 1863, the First Watch Night Service took place. On that night, enslaved and free African Americans gathered in churches and private homes all across the country awaiting news that the Emancipation Proclamation had taken effect. At the stroke of midnight, prayers were answered as all enslaved people in Confederate states were declared legally free. Union soldiers, many of whom were black, marched onto plantations across cities in the South, reading small copies of the Emancipation Proclamation, spreading the news of freedom in Confederate states. But not everyone in Confederate territories would immediately be free. Even though the Emancipation Proclamation was made effective in 1863, it could not be implemented in places still under Confederate control. As a result, in the westernmost Confederate state of Texas, enslaved people would not be free until much later. Freedom finally came on June 19th, 1865, when some 2,000 Union, um, troops arrived in Gavisston Bay, Texas. The Army announced that the more than 250,000 enslaved black people in that state were free by executive decree. This day came to be known as Juneteenth by the New Freedom People in Texas. The photo before you is showing, um, a group of individuals back in the 1900s that were, um, celebrating what they considered to be the celebration of Emancipation Day. The total cost for the unified government, if we chose to add Juneteenth or any other holiday, is about $397,000. As you can see, for the FOP, that ranges to about 135,000. For the IAFF Fire, that's approximately 172,000. IBW, 26,000. FOP for the sheriff and deputies, 46,000. Teamsters, 5,000. Dispatchers, 14,000. So again, the total is about $397,000 that would have to be paid for overtime costs to add on holiday. The question was asked, um, what other municipalities are doing in our region? Um, Mid-America Regional Council conducted a survey back in July, um, this year, and 26 municipalities participated in the, um, survey. Of those that participated, for number one, the first question is, has your city or amended, or are they planning on doing any type of an adjustment for the holiday? Three of those cities indicated that yes, they would be making adjustments to their holiday schedule and would be approving Juneteenth as a holiday. 14 indicated no, and then 10 indicated at the time that they, it was maybe, or they were uncertain at the time. You can also see that, um, for the rest of the questions, three of them did adopt Juneteenth as a holiday. 10 are still considering, and we know that nine that participated had indicated that between the next 30 to 120 days, a decision would be made by their elected body if they were going to observe Juneteenth. When you look at the county side on the state of Kansas, Johnson, Leavenworth, and Shawnee Counties have all adopted this holiday. Um, Douglas County, um, has not, um, approved this as a holiday. On the Missouri side, Cass, Clay, Jackson, and Ray Counties have all adopted Juneteenth as a holiday. Currently, Platte County has not. Federal and state decisions. Federal, of course, added, um, Juneteenth as their 12th holiday, um, including Inauguration Day, which occurs, of course, every four years. State of Kansas has not, um, decided to observe Juneteenth, and the state of Kansas has added Juneteenth to their holidays. Unified Government Board of Commissioners do have the authority to designate any days as a holiday as outlined in the Human Resources Guide. And as noted, the federal government, on occasion, or the state, may designate holidays to, um, celebrate or to use as a designated holidays. But the unified government, for example, does not, um, recognize Columbus Day as a holiday, and we do choose to use the Spring Holiday as opposed to the federal and the state governments. Again, tonight, the resolution before you is to consider amending Section 5.03 of the Human Resources Guide, adding Juneteenth to the holiday schedule observed by the unified government. And if approved, that date would be Monday, June 20, 2022. And also, we're asking consideration to amend verbiage in the current H R guide to formally call Good Friday Spring Holiday. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Madam Assistant County Administrator Cobbins, for that presentation. The one question I have was, it seemed as though not everyone under the UG umbrella was included in the breakout. That, that was the only question I had. And what was the difference between those groups of employees? And so you're telling us that the 397 is the total cost?
That would be for overtime costs that the UG would have to pay if elected to add any holiday.
Okay, and there are no other costs then?
That's the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, I think maybe you're getting through it. Many of our non-union groups or whatever, we're just gonna close the building, so we're not gonna have people coming in, so we don't have to incur overtime. There's some lost service that are kind of about by not being in operation on that day, and we'll have to make that up somehow. It's really difficult to put a number to that. Um, but certainly, if we lose a day of productivity, we've lost a day of productivity, and either you're not gonna get it done in the same timely fashion, or some department heads may elect to require staff to do additional work and overtime. It's hard to put a number to that.
Thank you. The quantifiable dollars, though, were just in overtime. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve, as submitted.
Townsend, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Keonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to ask, uh, recognize, uh, Administrator Bach for a public announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, Commissioners were able to express comments and, um, appreciation regarding the outgoing mayor and two commissioners that are, this is their last meeting. Um, at this time, we'd like to recognize them for their service to our community and pre, present each one of you with a, a plaque that we have, so you, I think after meetings like tonight, we should probably make these out of gold for you to have, um, to kind of demonstrate how they are. But, uh, we do have this plaques that are here, and this one is in my hand, is to, uh, Commissioner Philbrook for her service from 2013 to 2021. So I will make presentation of each one of these if I can, Mayor. And then I have one for Commissioner Walters, who served from 2013 to 2021. And Mayor, we have one for you as well, um, for your years of service from 2018 to 2021 as well. So I will give this to you tomorrow. Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for the evening. Thank you for your attendance. We are adjourned.